Okay, let's get started, everyone, and thanks for your patience on the delay. I've been at war with a printer this morning, so bear with me. Welcome to the January 21st, 2022 Virtual Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Timmy Knutson. My pronouns are he/him/this, and I am the Chairman of the ZBA. This week, we celebrated Martin Luther King Jr. Day. This year, I learned that the roots of MLK Day becoming a national holiday started here in Chicago. When Chicago's first black mayor, Harold Washington, day, a commemorative and paid holiday. The bill was vetoed by the governor. Mayor Washington reintroduced the bill twice before it was finally passed in 1973. Illinois has celebrated MLK Day since, although it wasn't until 1986 when the holiday became a national holiday, which again was much to the credit of Harold Washington. Equality, civil rights, and respect for all people, especially for black Americans, is as pertinent as ever. We honor Martin Luther King Jr. And his teachings today and always. As a personal announcement, two of ZBA's most consistent Zoom meeting viewers are celebrating some big milestones. This is personable, personal to me, so just bear with me, but I want to wish a big happy 80th birthday to my grandmother Judy Benelli, and happy 60th, happy 60th anniversary to her and my grandfather Ray Benelli, who happens to hail from the back-of-the-yards neighborhood here in Chicago. You're both a huge inspiration to me and keep the ZBA feed coming so long as it's positive. Finally, I'd like to welcome Vaishali Rao to the board today. Vaishali is an incredible lawyer and partner at the law firm Hinshaw &amp; Culbertson. She's very committed to service and civic duty and is a recent alumnus of Leadership Greater Chicago. She's a mom to two children, an avid traveler, hiker, and reader. We're super excited to have Vaishali joining us today and many times going forward. On to business. First, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on January 7th, 2022, the Governor of the State of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until February 7th, 2022. Thus, Section 7E1 of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Second, I'm making a determination pursuant to Section 7E2 of the Open Meetings Act that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. Similarly, I am also making a determination pursuant to Section 75 that because of the disaster declared by the governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the zoning board of appeals or its chief administrative officer or its chief legal officer to be physically present as at the meeting place inasmuch as there is no physical meeting place. Third, this meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation, promulgated first by my predecessor and now by me, and which are posted to the board's website. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the ZBA is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live streaming. It is also being recorded. We've established these virtual meetings in keeping with the governor, the General Assembly, the mayor, and city council's goal to government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are tactical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting. For those of you who do not appear regularly before the board, I will go over a few things. Number one, we are operating under the emergency rules. So for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you did not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date in time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will transfer you to a panelist. There will be a short switch over where you will lose the feed, so don't be surprised by that. Number three, if you are here in opposition to a matter, when your matter is called, please raise your hand so that we know you are here and may transfer you to a panelist. Number four, once you are all set as a panelist, please present your case. Board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you'll not need to manage sharing your screen. Number five, please be mindful of background noise and please mute yourself when you're not speaking at all times, including now. This will really make it easier for us to manage the matters. Number six, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our record, so it is important that two people do not speak at the same time. If this happens, you'll see me muting people. Number seven, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat that. If you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream in tandem. Number eight, please make sure you identify yourself when you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote and our court reporters cannot always see who's talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this. Number nine, if an applicant or anyone in opposition to the application has any technical issues presenting their case and is unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of the call to create time to resolve the issues. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent meeting. Number 10, after your matter or matters are concluded, please have, please leave the Zoom to ensure adequate capacity. If you are interested in continuing to watch our meeting, which I hope you are, I encourage you to watch the live stream, which is accessible from our website. Fourth, I hereby designate alternate member of the ZBA Vaishali Rao to serve in place of regular member Brian Sanchez for this meeting. So again, we welcome Vaishali. Now, I'd like to call this meet, virtual meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. I will take a roll call to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present. Commissioner Salt.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rao.
Present.
Thank you. And just to confirm, Commissioner Rao, can you hear and see me?
I can. Thanks.
Great. Commissioner Esposito.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Toya.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Great. I'm present as well, so quorum is established.
Chairman, this is Kamal. I just want to let you know that your internet keeps going out and you freeze. So you may want to move closer to your Wi-Fi or something.
Okay, I'm in a high-rise, so downtown. So Kamal, can you just let me know if it gets particularly bad?
Yes, sure.
Thank you so much. Sorry, everyone. Okay, the minutes of last month's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Salt?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great. I vote yes, they're approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Salt?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the agenda is approved. Now, we're going to take continuances and withdrawals. I've got a few noted that have been coordinated with DPD, so let me just go down my list, and then at the end, I'll open it up for anyone who wasn't called. First, in line with the emergency rules, yesterday, I continued Matters 36-22-S, 37-22-S, and for 18-21-S until February 18th, 2022. No further notice will be given with, for these continuances, but if anyone's on and has any questions, please speak up now. Okay. Let me call, or let, to repeat those, just so that the board has it. The matters we just continued in line with the emergency rules were 36-22-S, 37-22-S, and for 18-21-S. Okay, is anyone here for 10-22-S? Okay, so 10-22-S is going to be continued on the, just one month, which brings us to February 18th, 2022, because there's a companion variation that needs to be on, excuse to everyone for any, any confusion there. But again, 10-22-S is being continued on the record.
I apologize. This is the court reporter, Mr. Faticas. I can't hear you.
Right. Nick Faticas, F-T-I-K-A-S, on behalf of the applicant. And again, we did discuss this with staff, so I just wanted to make sure you knew I was here.
Great. Yep, thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that. And again, we're going to see you just next month on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, how about, is anyone here for 11-22-S?
Chairman, that's, that's also one of my cases. Again, Nick Faticas, for the record. We are working, continuing to work with the Department of Planning and Development on landscape and driveway access review. I believe staff was recommending a two-month continuance.
Yep, good. That one, agreed, Nick, we've got to do two months just because it's on, on substance in that process. So for calendar number 11-22-S, we will continue until March 18th, 2022, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, is anyone here for calendar number 13-22-S?
Mr. Chairman, Tom Moore.
Hey, Councilmore, good morning.
Good morning, thank you. We've been working with Nancy in planning and, and there's some concerns about curb cuts and traffic patterns and landscaping and number of uses. And so there might even be a necessity since the, the property line goes to the street line. There may be a need for a variance on landscaping. So we would request the two months of continuous to try to work all that out.
Yep, great. Thank you, Councilmore, for the explanation. And we will be continuing that matter again for everyone, 13-22-S. Two months to March 18th, 2022, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. How about, is anyone present to speak on calendar numbers 22? One second. It's calendar numbers 22 22-S and 23-22-S.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This is Nancy Radsby from the of community and, sorry, we're in planning and development. We have been working with the applicant's attorney on this. I'm not sure if she's on this morning, but I did speak with her yesterday. We've been going back and forth and with Steve Alenziano, trying to pull together some of the history of the site to get a better understanding of the parking. So we just want to make sure that we have all the information and can get that done correctly before this comes forward. We believe that can be accomplished in one month.
Okay, um, I think because this one is on the substance, Nancy, and we're really just doing one month for process-related
Yes, I can see.
Matters, we are going to hear this one in March. Does the department have any issue with that?
Yeah, and again, I don't know if the attorney is on, but she mentioned that there were some concerns related to some things going on with the ACP.
Okay, yeah, I think the attorney on this one is Talar Berbarian.
It is, yeah.
Talar, are you on? Let's see, maybe we don't have Talar on. But I am going to go ahead and
Chairman, I'm just promoting Talar.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Hi, Sir Chairman.
Morning, Counselor. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. I'm very sorry. I had some connectivity issues.
I am too, so don't worry.
I, I missed what occurred. So we, the department has asked for a continuance on our matter for, until February?
Yes.
We understand how we're going to work with them to provide any outstanding information between now and then.
Okay, and my question here is, we have been, I just want to get if there's a reason why it should be February as opposed to March? Because we're continuing two months.
Sure. So our client is currently, it's an existing business that they cannot get a business license until we clarify the issues with zoning. And the, the additional information requested has nothing to do with, well, has little, less to do with our operation than with the operation of the entire building. And so the department wanted to get more information about the parking requirements for the remaining tenants in the building. Not necessarily a question about whether we have enough parking to satisfy our use. And so we're hoping we can resolve those super quickly and then, you know, not run afoul of our client's ability to get their license for an additional month because we've been waiting now and we've provided the department with the information they're looking for. It's now from a third party, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's
Okay, and thank you, Counselor, for that explanation. So, and Nancy, Nancy, go right ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, for additional clarification, it is actually tied to their parking because whenever we do parking determinations, when those are required by zoning, we need to take it in context for what's happening on the entire zoning lot. So, so they're required, since they're splitting these businesses, this existing business into, we're required to complete two different parking determinations for each of those individual spaces. So we do need additional information from them to complete those, both for the businesses themselves as, as well as what's happening on the zoning lot as a whole. And then there's also some historical information that we need to check just in the zoning, hopefully in the zoning archives.
Okay, okay, it sounds like everyone is, is working together and I'm getting feedback on, on this one in the background that we should be okay with one month on this one to keep, to process. So again, for everyone, these are calendar numbers 22. Now that I have my agenda printed, let me make sure I get it right. 22-22-S and 23-22-S. And we'll continue these one month, which brings us to the February 18th, 2022 meeting. And no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Yep, thank you. All right. How about, is anyone here for calendar number 32-22-S?
Good morning, Chairman. Chris Leach, on behalf of the applicant 1010 West Madison Partners LLC.
Morning, Counselor. How are you?
Just fine, thank you. It was my understanding that the Alderman's Office, Sigil Lopez, Alderman, Sigil Lopez's office was going to ask for a continuance. I'm just on to make sure, to monitor that.
Great. Okay, yeah, we, we
Director of Exletive Affairs for the 25th Ward, that is my same role here today. We were, we were just trying to express that, seeing a little bit more time and would request a deference for one month.
Great.
And the applicant has no, no objection of that, Chairman.
Okay, perfect. Okay, yep, thank you, everyone, for coming on. And for this one, we're going to be continuing into March for our, for our regular, our regular two-month continuance schedule. So this will be heard on March 18th, 2022. And again, for everyone listening, it's 32-22-S.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. And no further notice will be given.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so continuing down the list, is anyone here for calendar number 485-21-Z or 486-21-Z?
Good morning. This is Taylor Nessie, Director of Zoning and Urban Development, representing Alderman Michelle Smith in the 43rd Ward. We are requesting that this item be continued. We had initially had the applicant request a continuance in the November hearing due to a response to not enough time for community review. It's our understanding that the applicant has since had to resubmit documents to the city, which necessitate more review before denial can be issued. So we are asking that this item be continued until March so that they can obtain the necessary So we are asking that this item be continued until March so that they can obtain the necessary denials to pursue for a second time.
Yep, okay, thank you, Taylor. And just give me a second, please. And Nancy, are you still on?
I am, but I'm unfamiliar with this.
Okay. I believe the counselor on this one, I think it's John Karthy. John, are you on yet?
I, I am here.
Thank you, John. So, John, we're discussing four-eighty-five dash twenty-one dash Z and four-eighty-six dash twenty-one dash Z. And the representative from Alderman Smith's office just brought up a request for a two-month continuance. Explaining, if I'm right, Taylor, that there needs to be some sort of new denial?
Correct.
Okay.
We have no objection to the two-month continuance.
Okay, so, John, is that your impression as well?
I'm sorry.
Just, I just wanted to make sure, John, that you're on the same page here.
Yes, we're speaking about four-eighty-five and four-eighty-six.
Yep, yep.
And we are agreeing with a two-month continuance that the Aldermanic office is requesting.
Okay, so do you know what the new denials are for?
Yes, it's kind of an interesting situation. Our architect presented plans and we went through the entire process with other plans. The variations will be the same as we proceed. But instead of a flat roof, we now have a peaked roof and several other things that are of minor detail, but are, we have not shown them to the community and to the Aldermanic office. But it's my understanding, we will not be seeking any other variations. It's just that the original plan that was presented is different than the plan that we had shown to the community. And so that we want to correct any possible misunderstanding.
Okay, that's helpful. So it sounds like the relief, the relief at least is staying the same, the variations are staying the same, there's just other details to be worked out.
Correct.
Okay, so, understanding that you'll be communicating with the department in the meantime, I'm gonna go ahead and continue these matters forty-five dash twenty-one dash Z and forty-six dash twenty-one dash Z to March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two as well. And no, no further notice will be given.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yep, thank you both. All right, is anyone else on to request a continuance or a withdrawal? We'll give a minute, but raise your hand again only if you're on to request a continuance and withdrawal.
Chairman, just want to bring it to your attention, this is Kamal, that we also have Alderman Raboyas and Alderman Burnett and Alderman Austin under a team.
Thank you for that, Kamal. So let's let's sort out just who, who is on for what. So, Alder people, if you could, if you could unmute and just so we can get a clarification of what you're on for, so that I know when to call you, that would be helpful. Alderman Raboyas, I think I see you unmuted.
That is correct, Chairman, I'm here.
Great, so I just wanted to, just to figure out when we'll call.
Oop, freezing up.
Well, you just to clarify ahead what you're on for, and we'll make sure to mark to call you.
I have a continuance of thirty-four dash two, no, I'm sorry. Continuance three-six-seven dash two-one dash S. Thirty-five fifty-seven North Long Avenue, that's one. And then I have the two of them for the same address, thirty, thirty-four dash two-two dash S. And then thirty-five dash two-two dash Z as in zebra. But the address known as three-seven-one-four West Belma for both.
Great, okay, so Alderman, just to confirm, are you on three-sixty-seven, you're asking for a continuance?
No, no, sir, no, sir.
Oh, no, okay. So you're here just to speak on those matters when they come up, correct?
It is correct.
Great, okay, I'm gonna mark this and, you know, we will, we will call you when they're up. It looks to me like both are put later in our session. So I don't know if you wanna correspond with our staff, just so you know when to come on.
Okay, who do I touch base with?
Victor Ressa is best in, we can give you a heads up, but it'll be several hours before these.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, I believe I see Alderman Burnett. Alderman, are you on?
Yes, I'm on, I apologize, I'm gonna brief at the same time. So I'm just trying to hear out what's happening with fourteen fourteen North Well. I think that's in my ward.
Yep.
And do you have anybody testifying? Who's the lawyer on that? And do you have anybody testifying against it?
Yeah, let me, one second, let me find the matter number.
I think it's six.
Thank you, okay. And it looks like Patrick Turner is Counselor on this one. So Alderman, this one will come up relatively quickly. It's number six in our order. So if you could, unless you're requesting a continuance, I'll say that, if you could, uh.
So can you tell me, so I don't even recall anybody talking to me about this. Can you tell me what's happening at that property?
Yeah, so it's a special use application for a barber shop and hair salon.
Okay, all right, that's not a big deal. Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for coming on, sir.
Yeah, no wonder I didn't hear from the community about it. So it's like, okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, appreciate it. Have a good other hearing that you're multi-capping with.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Last, but absolutely not least, Alder Woman Austin, I see you on as well.
Yes, sir. I am the absolute first on your agenda.
You are. It's the continuance before the regular call. Okay, so you're on for that matter, right?
Yes, sir, and I have one on the page eight, I think it is. I forgot to write my numbers down, but I'm here for the duration of both of them.
Okay. Great, so we will call you when four hundred is up.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Gardner is here as well.
Okay, Alderman Gardner, go right ahead.
Yes, I am here for three-six dash two-two dash S, Sam. On page seven.
Yep.
And then also on page eight, I have two at three-seven dash two-two S dash S and four-one-eight dash two-one dash S.
What was the last one? Sorry, Alderman.
Four-one-eight dash two-one dash S and Sam.
Okay, yeah, so these are ones we continued. Are you familiar with why we're continuing these?
I'm not, no.
Okay, so, and one of them's been continued a couple times. We need a real estate land appraiser expert report. And the reports that have been presented to us just don't fulfill our rules. We sent letters to the experts and to the applicants explaining what we need. But what was presented to us isn't sufficient for us to recognize anyone as an expert or use the report in any helpful way.
Okay, all right, so it's continued?
Yeah, both of those matters are continued one month to February.
Okay, and you mean both, meaning on page eight, because I have three today.
Yeah, so it's thirty-six dash twenty-two dash S.
Can you repeat that? You went out.
Yep, absolutely. So it's thirty-six and thirty-seven dash twenty-two dash S are continued as is four-eighteen dash twenty-one dash S.
Okay, so all three.
Yep.
Okay, all right, and then is there anything on our part my office has to do to help in this process or?
You don't know, we're trying to frankly handhold as much as possible and we've sent some good examples for them to base reports off of and just trying to get it to something that we can use.
Thank you, sir, for explaining that.
Yep.
Have a good day.
Thank you, you too. Okay, on four-eighteen, I see Ms. Hernandez's hand is raised as well.
Yeah, it was just that I only received the letter that I got on the twentieth was one letter. I've been trying to contact the office since the last continuance, so I wasn't sure. Yeah, it's a mute point right now, so I'll just stay on the call just to learn more about it and then we'll continue.
In our offices, you know, your expert was sent the letter as well. Our office is happy to help with this. We're trying to provide as many helpful materials as we can. We've just, for legal reasons, gotta get a report that's truly an expert report and we don't have that. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming on, ma'am. Okay, there's a couple more hands raised. And I wanna stay to, just please raise your hand if you're requesting a continuance or a withdrawal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not requesting a continual withdrawal. I was trying to see where the process was going. Because I'm Shanae, Shanae Joseph, four-twenty-two S.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not requesting a continuance or anything. I just was trying to get clarity on the order of the way things were going, just because I actually gotta get to work. So, but I see, I'll just, I see that it's, I'll just keep my headphone in.
Okay, and Ms. Joseph, you're pretty early in the call. So as things go, you're matter number four. And so you'll, we'll be clear when you're up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Last call for anyone who is on to request a continuance or a withdrawal.
Well, right now, I'll just take the email on the ZBA. The regular zoning for Tuesday.
Miss, okay, there we go. I think the older person was just not muted. Okay. So that was a jam-packed continuance and withdrawal period. Let's get going, though, with regular call. So with that, I'm gonna call first up calendar numbers four-hundred dash twenty-one dash S and four-zero-one dash twenty-one dash Z. As everyone gets situated, I wanna note that we do have objectors on this matter. So again, if you're objecting on these matters, four-hundred dash twenty-one dash S and four-zero-one dash twenty-one dash Z, this is the time where please just, please raise your hand. I'm gonna go ahead and and please, please make sure to have yourself muted while we get going. I'm gonna read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation as everyone gets situated. So calendar number four-hundred dash twenty-one dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of a gas station with a one-story mini-mart, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant Muhammad Abdullah, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout, plans and drawings dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by BAU Design and Development. And the hours of operation are consistent with other area businesses, opening no earlier than six AM and closing no later than ten PM. For those of you that have your hand raised, we've been trying to promote you to panelists. You need to accept the promotion.
Okay, am I the panelist?
Yeah, you are now. Thank you, Ms. Kane, but if you could go ahead and just mute yourself and I'll explain the process a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so again, this, this matter is a continued matter that has objectors. So how we run cases when there's objectors is we start where the applicant will give their case in chief. The board will be asking questions during the case in chief at all times. And once we vetted those initial questions, we will move things over to the objectors. We will then give the objectors time to each talk, hoping that, A, there's one person kind of leading the charge, because what we can't have in this meeting is repetitive objections from different people. So really, with each objection, we like to hear new information. It's truly quality over quantity. But during your time in objecting, you have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. Then after that is satisfied, we will turn back to the applicant who has a period of rebuttal. And, and just to make sure, if everyone could get muted, that's, that's great. Okay, so once we turn back to the applicant, they have a period of rebuttal where the board will be asking questions as well, and then we'll move to a quick closing by the applicant. So with that, Counselor Pecarsi, I know this is yours, so I'll let you take it away.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Am I loud and clear?
You are, Counselor, thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, this morning, I'm happy to represent Mr. Muhammad Abdullah and the property at one-twenty seventy-one South Halsted. This, we are seeking for this site a special use to introduce a gas station. Am I breaking up?
Counselor, you're fine. Let me quick just announce to everyone, again, it's, it sounds like someone is listening to the live stream in tandem. If you're a panelist, you've gotta turn off the live stream or else we're gonna have feedback issues.
Testing.
Yeah, Counselor, you can go ahead.
Testing one, two, three, am I coming in loud and clear?
Yep, we've, we've got you now, thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. The property is located at one-twenty seventy-one South Halsted. It is, we are seeking to establish a service station at this location with a mini-mart. I would indicate to the board at this point that a mini-mart is a food store. And so as a consequence, a twenty-four-hour food store as a matter of right can be established at this location. I would just like to make that statement. The property in question measures one-hundred-and-eight frontage feet on one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh Street and one-hundred-and-twenty-three frontage feet on Halsted Street. One hundred and twenty-seventh Street at this location is arterial street. Halsted at this location is a minor arterial street. Obviously, this is a, an important intersection as far as traffic is concerned. The property in question is owned C two-one motor vehicle-related district. Again, a recognition by the legislature that this is a high-traffic, high-density area. The site is currently improved with an abandoned auto care center that at one point in its history was a service station with the type of service being generally a repair of automobiles and selling gas as an accessory use. The property was improved in nineteen seventy-four and has laid fallow for decades. It is considered an eyesore to the community. It is clearly not something that is desirable at this or any other location. The proposition is to allow the continuation of the four curb cuts that are sought. The variation that is sought because the site measures thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-four square feet instead of the required twenty thousand square feet. So that variation is also sought in addition to the special use. The client is Mr. Muhammad Abdullah, who in addition to the having a contract to purchase the subject site, also owns Falcon Fuel Distributership and nine other gas stations. Mr. Abdullah is an important ingredient in the service station industry in Chicago. The reason for the variation is because we are no other avenue of expansion. We have one hundred and twenty-seventh Street on one side, Halsted Street on one side, an alley on another side, and a commercial building adjacent to us. That commercial building, by the way, is a lounge or bar, whichever you prefer to call it. I have with me several witnesses. And as the indication of the planning department is that they have no objection to the introduction or recycling of the existing site into a gas station. The only question that presents itself is the recommendation, and it's only a recommendation, that the hours of operation be limited. I would indicate to you that in addition to Mr. Muhammad Abdullah, I have the architect, Mr. Damian Babijaz, B A B I C Z, and his associate, Mr. Ambro Said. I have Mr. Joseph Ryan of LaSalle Appraisal, who is our appraisal witness. I have Mr. William James of Camero's and Associates, our land planning expert. And additionally, Mr. Rush Darwish, D A R W S H, who is the executive director of the Commercial Retail Association of Chicago. All wish to speak. I will call as my first witness, Mr. Muhammad Abdullah. Are you there, Muhammad?
Mr. Abdullah, I think you're just muted.
Okay, yes, good morning.
Morning, and Counselor, I'll go ahead and get Mr. Abdullah sworn in. So, Mr. Abdullah, will you state your name and address, please?
Muhammad Abdullah, forty-three Old Creek, Pila Spark, Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Mr. Abdullah, are you the owner of Falcon Fuel Distributership?
Yes.
And in addition to the fuel district, you also own nine gas stations, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have a contract to purchase the subject site at one two oh seven one South Halsted?
Yes.
Now. What is the purchase price of the subject site?
Six hundred thousand.
Okay, and if allowed by this board to operate your twenty-four-hour service station and mini-mart, what do you estimate the cost of construction at this site would be?
One point four million.
So that you're prepared to spend almost, not almost, but exactly at two million dollars, probably in excess of two million dollars by the time we get there?
Yes.
On this site? Now, are you familiar with the subject site?
Yes.
It's my understanding that the subject site is improved with a derelict building that has been vacant for a significant period of time, is that correct?
Yes.
And in your opinion, is this subject site beneficial to the community as it stands?
Yes.
The, the existing building? Is, is the existing building beneficial to the community?
Yes.
The, I'm not talking about the proposed building. I'm talking about the existing derelict building that is on the site, which is vacant and unused. Do you feel that this, this is a benefit to the community?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question, Mr. Bukarski?
Okay, the existing building, which is derelict and vacant, do you feel that this is beneficial to the community, having a derelict building and vacant property?
No, it's not beneficial to the community.
And is it your intention to create a new service station with a mini-mart component at this location?
Yes.
And it's my understanding that you have a contract to purchase the subject site for about six dollars, is that correct?
Correct.
I apologize, I'm so sorry, this is the quarter, I missed the amount.
I'm sorry, am I not clear?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you said it's, it's your understanding that you have a contract to purchase the subject site for about?
Oh, for about six hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
And that you intend to spend about one million four hundred thousand dollars on improving the site, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, let's address the fact that you intend to sell gasoline from this site. What, the gasoline and food, what do you estimate the sales from this site at?
Total sale will be approximately four point five million dollars a year.
And what percentage or what of that four point five million would be gasoline?
About three million, three million dollars in gasoline and one point five in the C-store.
Now, the tax on gasoline, it's my understanding that the tax on gasoline is about one dollar per gallon, is that correct?
Yeah, it is a little more one dollar per gallons. It's about, yeah, it's approximately forty percent of the, of the retail price of the gasoline.
So that the tax that would be available to all the public entities is forty percent of the three million dollars of sales, is that correct?
Correct.
And what is the tax on the food?
The tax on the food is two percent, and on food is approximately eleven percent. And cigarettes.
Now, let's, let's talk about the security and the construction that you're proposing. It's my understanding that you have interviewed on several occasions with the commander of the police district in the area?
Yes, I did.
And you've reviewed your plans and received his approval on several occasions, is that correct?
Yes.
It's my understanding that you propose thirty-six cameras at the subject site?
Yes.
It's my understanding, have enhanced lighting proposed for the subject site?
Yes.
It's my understanding that you will have armed security twenty-four hours per day at the subject site?
Yes.
It is my understanding that you are providing a minimum of eight new jobs at the subject site?
Yes.
Now, if the suggestion of the board, strike that, of the planning department is, is accepted, what effect would that have on your sales?
The effect will potentially losing at least thirty to thirty-five percent of the sales.
So that that would have a significant negative impact on this subject site, is that correct?
Yes, it's a huge negative impact, yes.
Now, you, you and your architect have presented a site plan which has been accepted by the city, is that correct?
Correct.
In your opinion, is the site currently served by a gas station or food operation?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, Mr. Bukarski?
Is the subject site currently serviced by a gas station or in the area? Is there a gas station close?
I mean, the, the subject site?
Is your, your property?
No, no, it's not my property, yes.
Okay, so, so that there's really nothing in the area? In fact, I think the testimony later on will show that we have a significant shortage of both gasoline and food locations at, at the area in question, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let me ask the, the seminal question, actually. If you were required to close your store and gas station for the hours suggested by the planning department, would you proceed with this development?
No.
So that it would be completely rejected as a business enterprise by you and you wouldn't pursue it, is that?
Correct.
Now, in your other nine gas stations, are any of them less than twenty-four hours per day?
No, all of them over twenty-four hours.
And I don't remember if I've talked about this or not, but you're providing a minimum of eight new jobs to the area?
Yes.
Now, if you were required to close for the suggested period of time, would you still need security at the subject site?
Definitely, yes, to protect the property.
And what about lighting and, and what about staffing?
Yes, lighting and staffing also.
Now, the cameras that you've suggested and worked with the local commander, can you tell me exactly what, what the program is for these cameras?
This is, it's a total of thirty-six cameras, okay, and they'll be connected directly to the police districts, so they have, they have access to the cameras twenty-four hours a day, anytime they want, okay?
I have no further questions of the applicant.
Okay, Counselor, do you just want to, you want to keep going down your list? Because before, before we go to objectors, I do want to call Nancy Radzovich from the Department of Planning and Development just to get the department's take on, on the hours, as it sounds like you're contesting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do you want to call your other experts?
Yes. I would call as my second witness, Mr. William James, a land planning expert with Camero's and Associates. Bill, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Great, and I'll swear, Mr. James, and so, Mr. James, will you please state your name and address?
William James, business address, four eleven South Wall Street, Chicago, Illinois, Suite four hundred.
Thank you, and you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Mr. James has spoken previously to this board and at hundreds of other meetings. Can we accept him as a qualified witness or shall I go through his entire?
Yeah, no, yep, we do, Counselor, thank you. We, we recognize Mr. James as, for his expertise.
Well, you, you, at my request and at the request of Mr. Abdullah, have prepared actually two reports concerning this location, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
The, the first one is an analysis of the special use and variation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, can you, strike that, are you familiar with the standards for both a special use and a variation under the terms of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes, I am.
Okay, let's, let's zero in on the special use request. Can you comment and testify as to the approval criteria for a special use?
Yes, I can. There are general special use criteria that apply to all special uses, and then with respect to gas station specific- uh with respect to gas station specifically, there are specific approval criteria for, for gas stations.
I believe that we have received approval of the city as to the uh specific criteria for gas stations as far as setbacks, planting, et cetera. So if, if you could, please concentrate on the approval criteria for a special use.
Okay. Um, so there are five uh approval criteria, complies with all applicable standards of this ordinance. Um, the application complies with all of them except for the minimum twenty thousand square foot lot area requirement of the subject site. The lot area is thirteen thousand two hundred eighty-four square feet, so except for that which we're asking in variance for, um, the subject site and the proposed development plan conforms with the zoning ordinance. Uh, two is in the interest. It is in the interest of the public convenience, will not have adverse impacts on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community. Um, and I have found that it, it complies with this standard. I can go into detail. Uh, but I, in my opinion, it, it complies with this approval criteria. It is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building, scale, and project design. Uh, and I have found that it applies with this criteria, um, uh, by reason of it being a reuse of, of a former established gas station and convenience store. It is, um, located appropriately at two major streets, a major intersection. It will be well landscaped and have um adequate um vehicular and pedestrian access. Um, and there will be significant investment in the building in terms of architectural enhancements uh to make it attractive and, and, um, uh, a positive use within the neighborhood. Uh, number four is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics such as hours of operation, outdoor lighting noise, traffic generation. Um, in my opinion, the proposed special use meets these criteria uh by virtue of, um, the site being in an appropriate location for a gas station. Um, uh, the building, the sign improvements and parking lot and lighting will be compatible or superior to other commercial uses in the area. Uh, the traffic and noise generation is compatible. Uh, this is a, um, a, a, a commercial corridor. Um, a lot of traffic, um, a lot of automobile oriented uses, and this will be consistent with that pattern of use. Uh, the operator, as he has testified, has committed to ensure measures of public safety and certain, including uh, security lights, security cameras connected to Chicago Police Department onsite, uh, security uh as well, uh, so that the operation of, uh, the business, uh, will be, um, uh, well managed and uh, will not produce, uh, impacts on the surrounding area. Um, and it is, um, uh, necessary in this location, uh, given uh, the importance of the two intersecting streets and, um, the, uh, the necessity of having both gas stations and convenience stores in, um, in the neighborhood. And five, it is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort. Uh, the proposed drive-through facility meets this criteria by virtue of um, uh, the site plan, which is designed to maintain site, uh, distance site clearance so that pedestrians uh can move safely along the sidewalks on the two intersecting streets. Uh, there will be obviously pedestrian access from the public sidewalk to the building. Um, and the project will have ample lighting to promote pedestrian safety. So those are the special use criteria, um, that, um, are in the zoning ordinance and I believe the subject uh, um, the proposed applicant, application meets these criteria.
James, can you go into more specificity on how, I know you noted it's a busy corridor. It is a busy corridor. Can you go into more spec- specificity on how this design in particular doesn't increase traffic generation in the corridor?
So, um. This as a convenience store, uh, will, uh, attract business from existing traffic that is going a- along the corridor. Um, both Halsted Street, which is a state highway, and one hundred twenty, one hundred and twenty-seventh street, which are also an I dot route, um, have large volumes of traffic. Um, uh, I believe that the use will draw business from this existing traffic. I don't believe it will generate additional traffic from outside the area to come to this location, uh, that that amount of, of business will be relatively small, uh, as opposed to drawing from the existing traffic that's already there, which is very, very significant.
Now, uh, sir, have you also, uh, at my request, uh, made an analysis of other gas stations in the area in locations that are substantially similar to the subject site? Uh, and, and made an analysis of the, uh, surrounding, uh, residential properties. Is that, uh, can you describe that?
Yes, I did. When, um, this matter first came up and, and we learned of the staff recommendation to limit the hours of operation and uh, the impact the applicants had would have on his, on, on his application, on his, on his operation. Um, I wanted to look at, um, what the land use composition was uh for our site in terms of a immediate, a two hundred and fifty-foot radius. Um, and to determine, uh, what percentage of land use within that two hundred and fifty-foot radius was, was commercial, industrial, or residential, or other land use to see if there was a specific uh characteristic of this site that made it unsuitable, uh, for a twenty-four operate, twenty-four-hour operation versus other locations. So we identified, and excuse my voice, I'm a little under the weather and I'm, uh, my voice is compromised, but uh, we, uh, looked at ten other nearby locations that have twenty-four-hour gas station convenience store operations and, um, uh, determined the land use composition within a two hundred and fifty-foot radius of those locations. And the, the major conclusion is that the subject site has no greater um, a proportion of residential use than these other locations and in fact has slightly less than average portion of, of residential use. So, uh, we could not find that this particular site has a greater um, degree of residential character than other twenty-four-hour gas stations in, uh, the, the south, the south city, Chicago, south side location.
And your analysis is based upon, uh, how many other locations?
Uh, comparing our location to ten other locations.
So that it is in-depth, is that correct?
Well, I, I think it's a, a good cross-section. Uh, and these were, uh, the ten nearest locations, all in the city of Chicago. We did not go into suburban locations because we didn't feel those were relevant, and this is a matter before the Chicago Z B A. So these would be the ten nearest, um, uh, gas station locations. Um, and so they uh, they are not cherry picked. They are the ten nearest locations, and we feel it is a good uh case study of land use, um, in the immediate area of, um, nearby gas stations.
Now, let me ask you a question. If the subject site is currently in food, does the abandoned gas station, uh, derelict building in any way enhance the community in which it is located?
No, um, vacant properties are, um, a negative, uh, impact on on, I think, any neighborhood and a, uh, a, a property that is reinvested in and is put to productive use provided, uh, is operated, um, uh respectfully and, and professionally and conforms with the requirements of, uh, the zoning ordinance and other applicable city requirements is a a, a positive asset to a neighborhood.
Uh, and one more question. Um, the, uh, proposed use as a twenty-four-hour operation, uh, in, in your opinion, would it have, uh, an enhanced negative impact on the community?
Well, are you saying would the twenty-four-hour gas station have, um, a more negative impact on the community than the current vacant property? Is that what your question is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, um, um. My opinion is that vacant properties, especially buildings that are, are not, um, uh, secured and, and don't have, uh, people present on the site can attract, um, um, negative activity can, can invite break-ins, can invite, uh, you know, illegal occupations of buildings. Uh, and those kinds of activities are very much more deleterious to a neighborhood than uh, a, a viable business that is in operation, even one that is, uh, operating twenty-four hours a day. So it is my opinion that, um, a, a well-operated, um, a twenty-four-hour gas station would produce, uh, less negative impacts on the neighborhood than a, a vacant um, unmaintained, uh, uh, property.
I have no further questions. If the board has questions of, uh, of, of the witness.
John, I think we can, um, uh, we can keep going with your expert. Um, and then, like I said, I do wanna hear, um, D P D after your experts, because I wanna discuss the hours.
I would call as my next witness, Mr. Joseph Ryan.
I'm here, Jan.
Uh, Mr. Ryan, please state your name, address, and occupation.
Joseph M. Ryan, M A I, president, LaSalle appraisal group with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Hoynes Avenue in Chicago.
And, uh, would, Mr. Chairman, would you go in to swear in the witness?
Yep. Hello, Mr. Ryan. Uh, Mr. Ryan, so will you state your name and, will you state your name and address one more time?
Nine four, Joseph M. Ryan, M A I, ninety-four fifty-five South Hoynes Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four three.
Thank you, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, and we acknowledge your expertise, many past experiences.
Thank you, Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Ryan, at my request, have you examined the subject site?
Yes, several times.
Several times?
Yes.
Can you please describe the subject site?
Site's a rectangular corner site located at, um, one hundred and twenty-seven oh one South Halsted Street in the city of Chicago. The site is one hundred and twenty-three feet of, uh, frontage on South Halsted by one hundred and eight feet of depth on West one hundred and twenty-seventh street. Uh, because the site's, uh, just under fourteen thousand square feet, it requires a variation uh for being, uh, to allow a gas station on a site under twenty thousand square feet. In my report, I provided, uh, addresses and franchise types of, uh, fifteen or so gas stations in the city of Chicago, uh, that have less than twenty thousand square feet and operate successfully without, uh, any problem and, uh, there are a hundred more gas stations in the city of Chicago, uh, that operate successfully on less than a twenty thousand square foot site.
Now, uh, in your opinion, as a, a, a praiser, uh, is there any benefit to the community, uh, by a, uh, an abandoned gas station, uh, and a vacant lot?
Um, no, absolutely not. Uh, uh, a viable gas station in this location would be a benefit and a convenience, um, for the community.
Now, uh, it's my understanding that one hundred and twenty-seventh street at this location is called a principal arterial street?
Uh, that's correct. Um, uh, the chairman had asked earlier about traffic at this location. Uh, traffic counts are just over twenty thousand vehicles per day on Halsted and just under twenty thousand vehicles per day on, uh, West one hundred and twenty-seventh street. So making it a very viable gas station location with forty thousand, uh, cars going by the facility every day.
Uh, it's my understanding that th- this property, uh, cannot be, uh, enhanced in as far as size is correct. Is that correct?
Uh, no, there's no, um, room for expansion.
That there's a, a, a street on two sides, a, an alley on the third side and a lounge, uh, or a bar, uh, in a commercial building on the fourth side. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, i- it, paying, uh, specific attention to the criteria for a, uh, special use. Um, have you, uh, issued an opinion, uh, as to such, uh, and, and promulgated it to the, uh, board?
Um, yes, I can quickly go through the criteria if you, um, prefer.
I would, uh, uh, prefer, prefer to do that, yes.
Well, the, the, this site was built according to county records in nineteen seventy-four. Uh, it, it was a three-bay gas station, which was, um, uh, the industry standard at that time, uh, as the oil companies got out of the retail gas business, uh, they did not want their operators to operate, um, uh, auto repair facilities with their product brand. Uh, so these three-bay gas stations became obsolete. Uh, this gas station in particular lost its franchise. Uh, removed the pumps and operated as a, uh, auto repair facility, which has since been abandoned and become an eyesore in the neighborhood. Uh, so it will once it's rebuilt, will, uh, comply with all the, uh, applicable zoning standards. Uh. It, uh, will have no adverse impact on the general welfare of the community. There are gas station locations within every community in the city of Chicago. Um, as I said quite often, these sites are, are, uh, uh, lower than the twenty thousand square feet newly, uh, enacted ordinance, but, uh, this site is viable, uh, curb cuts on two on South Halsted and one on South, uh, or West one hundred and twenty-seventh street. Uh, the C store will certainly be a benefit to the community and provide for the public convenience. Uh, the character of the surrounding neighborhood, this is a, uh, uh, commercial corridor except, or commercial, uh, on three corners with a cemetery on the, uh, northwest corner of the quadrant of the, um, uh, intersection. Uh, they're gonna renovate the building, so it will be, uh, uh, it's been there since nineteen seventy-four, so it'll be certainly compatible with the area. Uh. Planning and, and design and scale, it's typical of, uh, uh, most gas stations located in the city, uh, and the hours of operation. But twenty-four hours, uh, operation is very standard in the, uh, uh, industry. Uh. There's a restaurant located at one twenty-seven hundred. There's a restaurant located at 12700 South Halsted, west across Halsted Street that operates 24 hours a day. And there are several gas stations towards Ashland Avenue where the I-57 exchanges that operate 24 hours a day. So that is not unusual or unique to this area even. So arbitrarily saying a gas station can operate less than 24 hours based on the criterion, based on on evidence throughout the city of 24-hour gas station operation. I don't think the, in my opinion, 24 hours is is standard for a gas station and certainly not unique. And the the public convenience and pedestrian safety. This is is in three other locations on the corner, has has drive-throughs and there's been no safety issues at this location.
So is it your testimony that to have a gas station service minimar operating less than 24 hours a day would be truly unusual to the Chicagoland community?
Yes, most of the gas stations that I've appraised and I've done work for BP, Shell, Mobile, and Marathon, and I've appraised most of their gas stations in Cook County and the surrounding counties. 24 hours is is much more normal than limited hours of operation.
Is it your testimony that the limiting of the hours of operation of a gas station would produce an undue hardship both to the developer and to the community?
Well, it it basically goes to the highest and best use of the site and and the criteria to determine the highest and best use of the site. Is it physically possible, legally permissible, economically viable, and the maximally productive use of the site? And obviously, it's physically possible. It's zoned and and is legally possible. Limiting the hour is the limits and causing the question the economic viability of the site as gas station, which is obviously the maximally productive use of the site because it meets all those other criteria. And and without that, I mean, that's a business decision, but it would certainly impact the economics of the site and and maybe critically impacted to where it wouldn't be built and redeveloped.
I have no further questions of Mr. Ryan. Does the board?
Counselor, I've got a I've got a couple for Mr. Ryan, and the board might as well. So, Joe, I'm wondering if you could give us somewhat of a vision on how close residential is to this property and also what the hours are like for the neighboring businesses?
Well, it it I was there during the day. There appears to be a bar just south of 12717 appears to be a bar. Which would be open till 2:00 a.m. 12700 is the Harold's Chicken that appears to be open 24 hours. South on Halsted Street is a series of one-story commercial properties. The northwest corner, I said, is a cemetery. There is a dollar store at the what is that, the northeast corner, across 127th Street. To the east is residential uses. But that's very common in in the city for the commercial uses to be buffered by an alley to the residential uses. West on 127th Street because becomes much more commercially developed. Obviously, the, not obviously, but the cemetery goes for three or four blocks and there's more residential use. But after that, it becomes much more commercial oriented all the way to Ashland Avenue.
And Joe, just to clarify one thing you said. So do we know is the Harold's Chicken open 24 hours?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay, other questions from the board for for Joe or generally the applicant at this time? Okay, Counselor, keep going.
I I would call as my next witness, Mr. Damian Babiarz. Mr. Babic, please state, are you there?
Yes, good morning.
With you is is your associate, Mr. Amr Sayeed. Is that correct?
Unfortunately, he was not able to meet it.
Okay, so you're you're the Architect of Record.
Correct.
Briefly, and I don't intend to spend much time because both you and the city have agreed on the site plan for the subject site. Is that correct?
Yeah, you know, Counselor, I'll get I'll get him sworn in. So will you please state your name and address, Damian?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Damian Babic, Architect of Record, 1302 South Fifth Avenue, Des Moines, Illinois, 60018.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings? Sorry, I didn't get you. So let me just say it again. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Now, just just briefly, have you and the city agreed on a the site plan that has been presented to the board?
Yes, it was submitted, correct.
So that the city of Chicago and its planning and traffic departments as well as you agree on the subject site, is that correct?
I believe it's still being reviewed.
Fine, I really have no other questions as to Mr. Babic.
Okay, I've got I've got one, and maybe it's Mr. Babic, maybe it's it's you, Counselor, but I'm just hoping because we've got objectors on this that we can go into the variation a little bit and discuss the need for the variation and any related hardship.
Okay, Mr. Babic, are you familiar with the subject site?
Yes, I am.
And are you familiar with the fact that it contains 13,284 square feet?
Yes.
And that the requirement for a service station at in the city of Chicago is a minimum of 20,000 square feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, we are seeking a variation to reduce the property size from 20,000 to 13,284 square feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is it also true that the subject site is surrounded by South Halsted Street, which is a minor arterial street?
That's correct.
And that it's surrounded on one side by 127th Street. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's a principal arterial street?
Correct.
And that on another side is an alley. Is that correct?
Correct.
And on the final side is a commercial building that contains a bar, lounge, whatever you wish to call it. Is that correct?
Correct.
So is it a true statement that the subject site cannot be improved in size?
Correct.
The the current use of the subject site since 1974 has been a gas station that has morphed into a auto repair facility, which has morphed into a vacant derelict building and a vacant lot. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is it your opinion that the current use is substandard for the neighborhood?
Yes.
And that it has an effect upon the neighborhood?
Correct.
The proposal in your estimate, will it in any way alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
Yes, it will. Not otherwise.
In in a good sense, is that correct? Yes. Will there be any diminution or infringement of pedestrian traffic as a result of the proposed use?
There should not be. One thing I would like to add is that on West 127th Street, there are currently two curb cuts, even though one is closed off by the fence. But we are proposing to relocate the entrance off of the 127th Halsted Street, sorry, 127th Street away from the intersection to make it a safer access.
I I have no further questions of Mr. Babic.
Thank you.
The board does.
Any questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, I believe you've got one more, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
I recall Mr. Rush Darwish. Mr. Darwish, are you there? Hello?
See, Mr. Darwish, you're you're on mute and your camera's off, so if you hear us, just
Can you hear me, Mr. Darwish?
Oh, there you are. And you are just on mute.
Okay, am I on?
Yes.
Yep, I do. I do apologize. I was, of course, watching and being a part of it, but I did have to take a phone call. And of course, the timing worked out, you know, right as I was up. So forgive me, everyone. It's a story of my life, by the way.
No worries, no worries. Will you state your name and address, please?
Yes, I am Rush Darwish. My address is 10315 South 84th Avenue, Pales Hills, Illinois, 60465.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Darwish, are you the Executive Director of the Commercial Retail Association of Illinois?
Well, John, we're close. It's actually the Community Retail Association, not Commercial. So yes, it's Community Retail Association, aka the CRA.
And is my understanding that among your association, you represent approximately 225 service stations. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And the reason that I'm seeking your testimony concerns a very troubling problem created by the city planning department, seeking to limit the hours of operation at the subject site. Are any of your 225 operators limited in the number of hours of operation?
To our knowledge, no. All our store operators set the hours to the accordance of of what they believe is best for their clientele, with the majority being 24-hour establishments.
Right. Now, if, in your opinion, if the hours of operation at the subject site were limited, cut by a third, what effect would you would it have upon the operation, in your opinion?
Yes, I mean, of course, there's a discussion about, from a standpoint of money lost from a business standpoint. But for the Community Retail Association, we don't look at it just from the respect of the business losing money. What we look at is 35% of a customer base. These are customers that are going to work, customers that are dealing about their everyday business, which is 24 hours. And the idea of stopping hours, let's say, from 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., that will result in many customers now having to travel farther, exhorting more energy, more resources to go to a different store in order to buy their everyday goods. And an establishment like the development of Falcon Fuel, they are going to have what we call a large necessity items for their clientele, for neighborhood residents. So yes, if in an event you have an establishment where you have 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. of a closure, that will result in the inconvenience of a lot of customers who will now have to go somewhere else. And by the way, I want to add, John, this is not just a problem regarding this issue and this gas station. Already, the city of Chicago, in underserved neighborhoods, there's a huge food desert from one neighborhood to the next, from one store to the next. So an establishment like Falcon Fuel on 127th and Halsted would only serve customers and create a more convenient environment for them to have access to everyday necessities.
I have no further questions of Mr. Darwish. If the board does.
I want to just open up questions to the board for the applicant before we we, A, go to Nancy Radzovich to talk about the DPD recommendation, B, I want to talk to older person, Austin, about whether she's in in support or objection or wants to state otherwise, and then turning to the objectors. So any questions from the board at this time? Okay, so Nancy, are you still on?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Can you, since we're now in regular call, can you state your name and who you are, and I'll swear you in?
Absolutely. I'm Nancy Radzovich. I'm an Assistant Commissioner with the Department of Planning and Development in the zoning bureau.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
I would ask that she speak louder. You're not coming through very clearly.
Okay. Okay, and Nancy, I just wanted to call you and get your your take overall on the department's recommendation as it relates to hours. I know that's a lot of what we've discussed about so far, and and that's that's a lot of what I have questions on. So if you could give a bit of the rationale.
Sure. Specifically, what we were, what we always do when we write recommendations to the board is we review these projects based on the special use criteria.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
Counselor, just, I can hear Nancy pretty well. So let's see if it's something related to your speakers.
Yeah, I'm going to check that out.
Okay. And Nancy, thank you. I can hear you, but for, you know, as loud as you want to speak would be helpful.
Okay. So specifically, the criteria is the one that says is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics, such as hours of operation. So what we did is we looked at this area, and when we look at the area, we really focus on the immediate area, the immediate surrounding area, you know, the two or three blocks immediately surrounding the site. One of the biggest uses is a cemetery, which, you know, obviously doesn't have any sort of evening operations. The other principal uses, even though this is a commercial corridor, are smaller businesses. They're just local um, are smaller businesses. They're just local businesses. Um, and most of the hours generally are, um, that they close at, you know, some of them close at five or six PM. There's a, I think, a Dollar General that closes at ten PM. There's church, there's a, uh, there's a couple of, um, automotive type stores, um, that have pretty early hours. And our research actually indicated that Harold's Chicken closed at eleven PM. So, um, that's what, that's what we had found. And then when you look at also the whole makeup of that stretch of Halsted, it is very, very low intensity commercial uses. There aren't any significant, um, big automotive generators. There's not a lot of, um, late night, um, uh, businesses there. They're, they're really smaller commercial businesses. And then the predominant use is obviously to the east and, and to the west when you get off of Halsted are, are predominantly residential. Um, so what we did is, again, our recommendation is just based on specifically the criteria. What is the, the character of the, the area? And, and that's where we based that.
Am I correct that ten PM is, is fairly early for, uh, when compared to other gas stations in the city?
Um, you know, again, we, what we look at when we do these special uses is we look at each individual site, which is what we're required to do. So what we did is we looked at the context of the neighborhood of these businesses, um, and looked at the context of this community. And, um, DPD felt that ten PM was more reflective of the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, questions from the board for, um, for Nancy?
I just had one question. This is Faisal Dali.
Great.
Um, quick question is, how did you arrive at ten PM versus, say, eleven, twelve, one, two? How, how did you arrive specifically at ten PM?
Yeah, we, we looked at is, again, we looked at the bulk of the businesses. So there's, there's a couple of automotive stores. Those closed at five or six PM. We found the Dollar closed at nine PM. Um, again, there's that predominant land use right across the street, um, and to the, to the north. Um, that's a cemetery. You know, there's, there's a lot of, um, inactive uses. So what we did is we gauged, um, the general hours, and then we, we kind of, you know, went a little bit higher than, than the general average.
Thank you.
Of course.
Other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Nancy.
This is Commissioner Esposito. I do, just, um, not to, maybe we ask to repeat. Um, did the planning department consider the hours of nearby gas stations and a comparison?
Um, we did not. Again, what the criteria for the special use is specifically, how does this particular business fit in with the character of this surrounding area in terms of operations, including hours of operation? So that is the criteria, and that's what we looked at to evaluate this.
So is there anyone who can respond to a question such as, what are the hours of the closest gas stations?
Yeah, Joe, um, I, I think that question could be best directed to Joe Ryan.
Or, or Mr., uh, the, uh, land planning expert, uh, who wrote an opinion letter as to, uh, the, both the criteria and, uh, to the, uh, uh, uses of ten other stations.
Right. So again, this is Commissioner Esposito. How close would some of those ten other stations be to this one?
Bill, are you available?
Yes, I, I, I am available. So, um, uh, in my, um, report, um, uh, you know, these ten other stations. So there's one at, uh, a BP at one hundred and fifty West one hundred and twenty-seventh Street, um, uh, which is, I believe, would be about a mile, uh, to the east. Um, uh, there is, um, uh, one twenty-three oh four South Halsted, uh, about a half a mile to the north, uh, one fifteen oh one, uh, South Halsted, a little further, uh, north, um, probably about a mile. There's, um, nineteen, sorry, there's ninety-nine, uh, a hundred South Halsted. So, um, there are many, um, um, uh, twenty-four hour gas stations, you know, in, in, in the immediate area. And if I could just comment here, if, if the criteria on hours of operation would be that, uh, you know, the, 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 the subject use has to have hours of operation comparable to the other businesses in the area, you'd have no twenty-four hour, uh, g- gas stations because there's hardly any twenty-four hour uses other than, you know, uh, very specific types of uses like gas stations. So, um, in that respect, I think it'd be very, a very difficult, um, uh, criteria to, uh, to, uh, to meet if it's applied to all gas stations.
I, I would love to hear Joe Ryan's take on this.
Um, well, within a mile west of the property, uh, again, towards, uh, uh, the I fifty-seven and one hundred and twenty-seventh interchange, there are five gas stations open twenty-four hours a day. Less than a mile from the subject property.
That's helpful. Thank you.
But, but now those are more, uh, aren't as convenient for the, uh, population. You know, there's eighteen thousand people within one mile of the subject property, population-wise, and a hundred and forty-two thousand within, uh, three-mile radius of the subject property.
Commissioner Esposito, is that, um, do you have any follow-ups? Is that sufficient for you?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Okay, um, any other questions from the board, or else I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the elder person to speak? Okay, older woman, Austin, do we still have you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I just thought this would be a good time to call you, um, for you to state either a support or objection or other thoughts.
I am in one hundred percent support of this location. Uh, out of all the information-
Oh, sorry, sorry ma'am to interrupt you. I apologize. I do need to swear you in, and I always forget that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
With older people. So, um, will you state your name and who you are?
Carrie M. Austin, Alderman, thirty-fourth ward.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, go right ahead, ahead, ma'am.
Uh, as I was saying, I'm one hundred percent in support of this project. Uh, as Mr. James and, uh, Mr. Ryan have spoke, uh, in regards to this project, and Mr. Bukarski have asked, in my opinion, quite a few questions that would cover the entire area. Now, uh, I've been Alderman for the last thirty years. My husband was the Alderman for seven of those. And in the time of this particular location that we have been in this area, there has been such a lack of activity down on this end or any type of business, except for the ones that are in existence now. When, uh, Mr. Muhammad came in with the idea of, uh, directing this new facility, my first thought was, as he has stated, a food desert. Because on this end, the only people that we have as to distribute, distribute any type of food is Dollar General. So this was a, a, a win-win for me, uh, in our community. It wasn't going to be an impact. And I know one of the, uh, speakers have said about, uh, Harold's on one side of the street. Um, and they do close at twelve.
Yeah.
Uh, then the, uh, cemetery, they close at five. So on those ends, those are specific businesses that have chose those times to close. As far as the other automotive stores that are on those end, they chose those hours to close, which has been in compliance for the last thirty years that I know of, especially Red's, uh, checkpoint. Uh, I have worked with Mr. James for the last twenty-five years in regards to improving South Halsted from a hundred and twenty-ninth to ninety-ninth. Now we go to ninety-seven. And of all the locations that they have spoken of, the majority of those locations are twenty-four hour gas stations. We've only had a few incidents at some of them, but for the most part, we've not really had any, any incidents that would, you know, spur any, uh, police activity. But on this end, it has been a very lack of activity. So I believe that it would be a benefit, uh, if this has been approved, if this is approved. Thank you so very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to also say to you, Mr. Chairman, uh, happy anniversary to your grandparents and happy birthday. Uh, but for the speech that you gave in regards to MLK, really did touch my heart. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, older woman, for, for all of those words. Um, and, um, we appreciate you coming. I do have a quick follow-up, just clarification. I just want to make clear on the record, you disagree with the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation that this would close at ten PM. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Because it's going to be a food mart as well.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board, um, for older woman Austin? Okay, a- again, thank you so much, older woman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, counselor, at this point in time, I want to move over to the objectors. Um, just keeping with our process. So with that, I know there are several, several signed up, and I have several on the roster. Um, is there one, and, and you can just unmute and speak, that will be leading things off?
Raise my hand.
Yeah, Ms. Kane, are you still on?
Yes, I'm on.
Great. Um, you, would you like to speak first?
Sure, um.
Okay, let me just swear you in really quick. Um, can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Annette Kane. I live at seven two seven West Vermont, Chicago, six oh six two eight.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And just as a quick reminder, um, you're able to state your objection, and also you're able to ask any questions of the applicant, if you have any.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay, first, uh, I'm trying to understand why is it that Muhammad Adu do not own the gas station, and he's able to put in an application for, uh, the gas station, and he does not even own it?
Yep.
And I think he-
So I was just going to say, I'll let the applicant, um, take, take this. It's a legal formality. So, John, you can go right ahead.
Yes, uh, uh-
As far as I'm concerned, the applicant is a contract purchaser of the property and has the full approval of the contract seller, uh, to seek the, uh, special use and verification, so.
Okay, on the letter that was sent to the residence, it states a legal title to the property is held by the applicant Muhammad Adu of one twenty-seven oh one South Halsted, Bridgeview, Illinois. And that's on the bottom.
That has been amended.
It's been amended.
To reflect-
But we haven't received anything.
And, and, uh, secondly, I, I talk about relevance, uh-
Uh, John, I think it's relevant. We can, we can explain and make sure everyone's on the same page.
Okay, so that's, that's one thing. And the, the second thing is that, uh, um, I don't think that he should be able to put in an application. I know he shouldn't, by the ordinance, that he shouldn't be able to put in an application with, unless he owns the property. And also, they continue to say that the, uh, property at one twenty-seven oh one is abandoned. The property is not abandoned. It is, it is being ran by a muffler shop. That's, that's one of the second things. And also, with Harold's Chicken, Harold's Chicken, they stated, uh, I would say the attorney stated numerous of times that it operates twenty-four hours a day, which it closes at eleven o'clock on the weekdays and twelve on Saturdays. And also, uh, we have about ten gas stations within a mile in our community. Within a mile. Now, we feel, our community feel that gas, this gas station being put in our community will only draw bad elements to our community. We just had last year, a young girl got shot and killed, uh, with a carjacking, a gas stations within a half a mile. All of the gas stations that opens up twenty-four hours a day in that mile has had a lot of, uh, problems regarding criminal activity that goes on in those, uh, gas stations. Now, um, and the criminal activity is like the carjackings, is uptick in carjackings and the gas stations, robberies. Excuse me, I'm talking. Excuse me, I'm talking. Um, robberies, these gas stations would be in our backyard. We're pretty quiet on this end, and we want to keep it that way.
Yeah, ma'am, and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna cut in because counselor did object. When, when, when you speak about specific events, we, we just need some, some facts, um, as to, you know, what happened, dates, et cetera, for it to be, um, in any way applicable to, to our review.
Okay, well, I don't have any dates right now, but, and in the future, if we have to continue this, I will get those dates. And also, Mr. Abdu, I, if I'm not mistaken, he owns a gas station on a hundred and third, I believe, in Wentworth. This gas station, the crime stats from that gas station states that, uh, that gas station is a hub for criminal activity, and I know that the residents in that area, because I spoke to them, stated that they want that gas station shut down.
Specificity.
Okay, um, uh, you know, I would like to just reverse that, um, as a question on the applicant. So, Mr. Mr. Abdullah, um, can you discuss this, your property on Wentworth?
No, I do not own this property on a hundred and third and Wentworth.
Okay.
I'm not really connected with it at all. We don't even supply it as a supplier. We don't have any relationship with that property.
Okay.
You don't have any relationship? Okay, well, uh, Alderman Austin stated that the first hearing that she came on, she stated that he owns a gas station there. You look back on your records.
Uh, we've got, we've got the applicant on the record, though, noting that he doesn't own or is not associated with that property you mentioned.
And also, I spoke to the commander. The commander said he could not approve of anything regarding the businesses. So for them to say that he approved of that, I, I don't know where they got that from. I don't know what's going on with that.
Can you specify a little bit on that? I'm not, um, uh, I'm not sure what you mean by the commander and the business. So can you, can you go a little bit more in depth on that?
Well, I had asked the commander, did he approve of the gas station on a hundred and twenty-seven, of, of this gas station being built on a hundred and twenty-seven? He stated to me that he can't approve of anything. You know, so that tells me that he did not approve of it.
Uh, who is the commander?
Commander Glenn White.
Okay.
And for all of the security, um, that they say they have put up, that's not going to help us in our community when criminal activity come. They care, these people care nothing about cameras and, and security guard. Um, also, um, the, um, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous here, but I get through this.
No, you're fine, ma'am. I just, I, I just want to state that, um, the objections that really, um, are, are thing- No, you're fine, ma'am. I just, I, I just want to state that, um, the objections that really, um, are, are things that the board can take into consideration when we have a conversation on the topic relates to our criteria for, um, for special use, so, um, we can't really weigh anything that is, is what I'll, I'll call, I'm not a litigator, but I'll call hearsay, what someone else has said. It's gotta be substantive objections to what they're applying for.
Okay. Okay, well, it was eleven-year-old, like I said, that got shot and killed at the gas station a half a mile away. And, uh, they have mentioned numerous of times, I don't know if I said this already, uh, there's nothing in this area, right here in, in our little area, that stays open twenty-four hours. First, they said they was on close at ten, then I keep hearing twenty-four hours, twenty-four hours. So either you're gonna close at ten, or you're gonna be open twenty-four hours a day.
And just to clarify, that is part of what we are, um, e-evaluating in this, this hearing right now. What happened was, the applicant would like to be open twenty-four hours. The Chicago's Department of Planning and Development made a recommendation that it closes at ten. Um, so it's part of the discussion right now, but I, the applicant's point of view is they would like to be open twenty-four hours.
But it's nothing in this community, I'm just saying that stays open twenty-four hours a day. They have their times wrong, uh, the, they, uh, the property is not vacant, it has not been vacant for, I say, at least the last fifteen, twenty years. So I don't know where they getting the vacancy from.
On that note, I actually, that's, um, the, the interesting point to me. Um, I don't know if, if Joe Ryan would be the best to address this, but can you address the, um, the statement that there's some sort of muffler shop on the property?
Anderson. Um, it, it, there's a signage for muffler shop, um, uh, the three times I was by that location, I never saw any activity in the muffler shop. Uh, as, as far as cars coming in and out, uh, and, as you see, the gates were closed all three times I was there. Um, so if, if there is a business there, it, it's not very active.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I, I do want us to be careful around any wording then related to abandoned, because I think there's a lack of clarity on to whether it's actually an abandoned property.
Okay, well, the prop, property is not abandoned. And, uh, and I'm quite sure I have other neighbors that's on also that would contest to that. Uh, also, the Dollar General closes at nine o'clock. Harold's Chicken closes at eleven, like I said, I'm repeating myself, but give me eleven o'clock. And we do not need a hub in our community for criminal activity. We need nothing that gonna stay open twenty-four hours. We have spoke to Carrie Austin, Alderman Carrie Austin office before. We asked that we have nothing else coming to our community that has to do with cars. We are in a food desert. This gas station is not gonna give us no fresh fruit, fresh fruits and fresh vegetables that the community need. And most of the, probably the, um, people that were patronized this gas station, uh, were probably the younger people, which will cause probably more, uh, problems in our community.
Yep.
So this, these are just some of the reasons, and I, I really wanna know, how was he able to get an application in, and he does not own the property?
So, and, and thank you for your objections. That point is actually something that has, uh, is just an administrative point that, to us, we're okay with legally. Basically, the property owner gives consent to, um, uh, someone to, to come represent it, and, and that's Mr. Abdullah. And I, I know the amendment changed who the property owner was, but, um, uh, your other substantive points, we will, we'll definitely take under consideration. Um, I'd like to call other community objectors on, and, and just remind that, um, in the goal of us getting our meeting, our meetings done today, we can't have repetition on issues. So if you have something new to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna promote someone who is titled Zoom user, um, just to make sure they get to speak if they're here to object.
Chairman, it would be safer, I just allowed them to talk, because we don't know their name.
Okay, great. So you have, um, permission to talk, and you can either just say you agree with the, the past objection, or you can give your objection, but go right ahead. Um, and I'll get you sworn in. Please just state your name. Okay, so is, uh, can the person titled Zoom user unmute themselves?
Okay. Good morning.
There we go. Okay.
Good morning, my name is Sharon Evans.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Um, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, just to confirm, you're here to object, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. So to get your objection on, we'll just need your address as well. Could you please provide it?
Okay, I stay at one-twenty-six-fifty South Emerald Avenue, Chicago, six-oh-six-two-eight.
Great, perfect. Um, and you are sworn in, so, um, go right ahead, ma'am.
Good morning, thank you. Thank you all. I would like to object to this situation, due to the fact that you all say that the community, um, is dry as far as not having, uh, a grocery store. Gas stations does not, um, provide substantial grocery stores. I'm concerned about the housing that's located directly on Emerald Avenue. They never addressed the, uh, the residents that lives right here on Emerald. Um, gas stations does not provide what we need if, if residents doesn't have their groceries by ten o'clock. They're definitely not going out at midnight, one, two in the morning to get groceries. Um, it's elderly people lives right behind there. What, what about the concern about the residents' housing that's so close to, to the gas station? If they come out to empty garbage, they can step three or four feet and they right over into the gas station. Um, these young girls are being abducted at gas stations. Sex trafficking goes on at gas stations, and that's a new subject. And you all always talk about money coming into the community. You all don't use the money, uh, to, uh, that comes in the community, lottery money. None of the other money goes into the community. And a lot of these people that come in here, open these gas stations, they don't, they, they lock up and go home. Give back to the communities. If kids are selling taffy apples for school, or, or, or any type of things being sold by children go to those gas stations for them to patronize them, they don't give back to the community.
Okay, ma'am.
We have a lot of, we have a lot of elderly people over here. It's not safe for them to go in and out of their garages. That's the new concern, going in and out of their garages.
I'm gonna interrupt you for a second, because I, everything you're saying, of course, is a valid concern. I just want to, uh, state that our jurisdiction here, we're the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, so I know you're saying a lot of, uh, you-focused statements. We weigh our analysis on giving, um, uh, granting special use permits related to pretty succinct criteria, so I think the criteria-
I understand criterias, but you all should really reach out to residents in the neighborhood and not go on what, what an Alderman in, in the ward says, that don't even reach out to her, uh, residents in her area.
Yep, and just for the record-
And she's talking about, she's a hundred percent in, 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 for, for it to go up. I'm not a hundred percent for it to go up, and I live closer to it than she does.
Yep, ma'am, and just for, I, I just want this on the record, we, um, as a board, the Z B A cannot do independent research. We cannot go into the community, so we rely a lot upon the findings of fact that are granted to us and objectors like yourself coming in front of us today. I, I, I wanna, I, I was about to just direct you into our criteria. I think the one that you are addressing is, um, that you think this special use would have an adverse impact on the general welfare of the community. Is that the argument?
Absolutely, 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 absolutely. And the reason why I brought up the other things about the concerns in the community, because the guy that said he went by there and never saw the muffler shop in use. Who knows what time he went by there? It doesn't say, doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that it doesn't exist. And we do not need a gas station over here twenty-four hours a day. He should have a, a respectable time to be in the community if he was to come upon the community. It doesn't take twenty-four hours. And then they go into stores and mark, get stuff and put on the shelf and market up to half for people to, uh, to buy. And another thing, he said two percent tax on, uh, on food, and maybe, maybe putting eleven percent tax on potato chips and different stuff if people buy to those stores.
Yep, okay, um, thank you, ma'am, and we'll-
Thank you, thank you.
We'll take this under consideration when we go, uh, deliberate as a board, so, um, do we have another objector on? I'm looking down the list.
Peggy, my name is Peggy Pointer.
Thank you, Ms. Pointer, and you state your address as well, please.
One-twenty-eight-nineteen South Union Avenue, Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, one of the great concerns I have is that this probably doesn't have anything to do with the board either, but I actually, uh, report to Alderman Bill, because I live on Union, and one side, east side of the street is Carrie Austin, and the west side of Union is, um, Alderman Bill. And I heard Carrie, uh, well, Alderman Carrie mentioned that this area has always lacked activity in the area. And, and it's true, it's because she or either Alderman Bill have never made an effort to bring businesses down on this end, whereas on the area, uh, where she's located, the businesses are booming. And my main concern is, I have this Citizen app that I listen to daily and at night, and so far, we're like a cul-de-sac. We are right here at one hundred and twenty-seven, but when I listen at this Citizen app at night, all I hear is crime being reported to the police department, robberies, people drawing knives on someone, shootings. And it has come so close to our area, we are right at one hundred and twenty-seven. So far, the crime, bad crime element has not been to this area. So my concern is, if we open up, uh, if you are, I'm fairly opposed to this-
Just to, just to butt in, because Counselor objected. Um, ma'am, I, 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 I want you to continue, I just want, um, it to be focused within, within the criteria that you think it will have a significant-
Yeah, well, that's why I'm talking about, that's the very reason why I brought up this, um,
Okay.
Citizen app. If we allow this service station to open in our area, I strongly believe that the crime rate will increase in this area, because it is a hub for crime. And I strongly oppose to it. Now, I understand he wants, he has two million dollars that he wants to invest in the community. But my question is, if you wanna invest and help this black community, why didn't you open up a big grocery store? That would serve our needs more so than a gas station and a convenience store. No, I would never, I would never, ever buy anything from a convenience store, because as the lady stated before me, they increase the prices. So no, I, I strongly oppose to it.
Thank you very much, ma'am, for coming today.
You're welcome.
We'll take this under consideration as well. Um, I believe that we've spoken to, um, to all of the objectors, but please unmute yourself if I'm wrong, and again, um, you can either state your objection, or just state that you agree with what the other objectors have said.
I agree.
Okay, who's speaking, just so we can have it on the record?
This is Lisa Young. I'm in the thirty-fourth Ward Office, uh, I'm in Ward. I'm at one-twenty-eight-eighteen South Union Avenue, and I am opposed to having this gas station.
Thank you, and really quick, just so we can include it, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, great. And now you can, now if you could just state your, your opposition, even if it's just that you oppose, just so that we can have it validly on the record.
Okay, I'm opposed to this gas station being zoned at one-twenty-seven-oh-one South Houston Street. And the reason why is all the points that Annette Kane and Peggy Porin and the rest of them have already stated. This is nothing but another hub for some criminal activity in which we don't need. It's not even necessary. We don't need a gas station here. There is at least eight gas stations within a mile radius. So we don't lack gas over here. We do lack a grocery store, however. If something that needs to be zoned in is a full, productive grocery store. And that's it. I thank you so much.
Yep, thank you, ma'am. Thanks for spending your time today, and we'll take this under consideration. Um, any other objectors I'm missing, and, um, uh, again, just because we need to continue with our day, um, only new objections. Um, but is anyone else on? Okay.
Hello, can I say something again, um?
Um, so, Ms. Kane-
Annette Kane.
Yeah, Ms. Kane, we, um, we have given you ample time, so unless there's something brand new that hasn't been touched-
Yes, it's something brand new.
Continue with our day. Okay, so I'm gonna give you-
Yes, it's something brand new, I forgot to say. I had submitted you a written protest.
Yep.
I submitted the, uh, you guys, the zoning board, a written protest from the community. So, uh, I'm quite sure you should have it. I submitted it, uh, on, before November the nineteenth. So you all should have the written protest regarding that we are opposed to the gas station. Pardon me?
Yep, yep, we do. Um, you sent it on, uh, May, I see May seventh, twenty-twenty-one, yep.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna move back to the applicant, and the applicant is able to give rebuttal testimony, and the board can ask questions, um, and then the applicant will close out. I'd like to make this quick, because I, we do have a lot of information on this one, but with that, John, um, take it away.
I, I will try to be brief. However, th- this is a, a, a pivotal, pivotally important question. Uh, the property in question is located on a principal arterial and a minor arterial street. This is not a quiet side street, uh, nor is it a residential district. You know, granted, there is a cemetery, uh, located kitty corner from the subject site, but there, there clearly is no objection, uh, from, uh, the, uh, residents of the cemetery. Uh, the property i-is derelict. It is in sad shape, it is not, and there's direct testimony from, uh, both the land planning witness and the appraisal witness as to the negative impact of the current use of the property. Uh, the, uh, fact is that this is nothing that adds to the quality of the community. Uh, I would suggest that the, uh, improvement of almost four million dollars uh, is, is something that should be welcomed, uh, especially since it's located on two arterial streets. The, uh, question as to the, uh, discussions with the, uh, police, uh, commander. Yes, the police commander cannot make a recommendation, but the police commander has indicated in several conversations with my client that he's quite pleased with the fact that we have cameras that are directly linked to the, uh, police, uh, command, uh, police station, uh, that we will have armed, uh, security on the subject site twenty-four hours a day. Uh, and, and, uh, this is, this is something that is, is, uh, totally contrary to, uh, some of the testimony, uh, that has been elicited. Uh, the, uh, final thing that, that I would like to say is that we are prepared to, uh, create revenue in the amount of approximately four million dollars per year at the subject site. In addition to sales tax, gasoline tax, and- In addition to sales tax, gasoline tax, and real estate tax, we are providing to the community a bright new concept that is providing food and gasoline to the site, which clearly does not have anything near, anything comparable near this site. Unfortunately, for some reason, without onsite inspection, by the way, the planning department has issued an opinion that it should be closed. Well, this is borders on impossible and will be totally detrimental and will cause this project to be scrapped.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, this is alternate board member, Isha Lee Rao. Sorry for the quality of my camera. Not sure. I was just wondering whether the department or anyone else has further testimony on whether the property, whether the lot right now is vacant. I do understand the prior testimony, but there does seem to still be a factual issue as to whether there's activity and a, and a business that's currently operating there or whether in fact the property is vacant, which seems to be pretty significant. So I'm wondering if there's another witness that can testify as to what's happening there.
Yeah, maybe. Let's see if Nancy Radzovich is on, just in case. Nancy, are you still on?
I am.
I don't know if this would be something that you came across, but, but just, it doesn't seem like, it seems like the applicants told us what they know about it, but I'm just looking for some more.
Understood. Yeah, again, based on our research, we, we found that it was a muffler shop. We did not find that it was abandoned. And just, you know, for what it is, anecdotally, I just Googled the site and the business right now. And it says it's open and closes at 6:00 PM. So we didn't, we didn't find any indication that it's been closed.
Yeah, I, you know, I think for our purposes of conversation, we don't really, nothing that has been brought up about it being abandoned is correct. So I want to ask Mr. Abdullah to address that as well.
Mohammed, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Yes. Can you repeat your question, Chairman?
So, we've got a good amount.
We've got a good amount.
And if you're listening on the livestream, please turn it off because I think I'm hearing feedback. But we had heard from, from the applicant side of things that this was an abandoned property. Everything we see shows that it's not, so I just want you to address that.
I do not, as you know, I do not own the property now. It's a contract on it. I'm not sure if it's abandoned or occupied. But at one point, I went there and I saw the places open for business. Okay, but I'm not sure exactly the hour of operations and if it's consistent like opening during the day. Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Rao, I know maybe you didn't get the whole answer we thought, but do you have any follow-ups on that?
I think that's sufficient. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I just called the phone number. They are open until 6:00 PM.
Okay, good. So sorted. We won't consider any testimony related to it being abandoned. Okay, I am hearing no additional questions. We've got a lot of information on this. I want to thank everyone for their time and we'll take this under consideration. With that, I'm going to call a 15-minute recess. That brings us back at 11:55 AM. And I know the first one of the day took a while. I think with the next few pages, we have capacity to move quite quickly. So Commissioner Toyah seconds on the recess. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
I will, yes, I'll see everyone back here at 11:55 AM. Thank you.
Hey everyone, let's give it just one minute. We've got a commissioner that had to restart their computer, so I'm gonna get them promoted. Okay, I see everyone on. So I move that we reconvene this January 21st, 2022, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Ralph.
Muted.
Yep. Commissioner Ralph, are you, are you on? Sorry, it might be my, my audio. Let's make sure your audio works. Commissioner Ralph, are you, are you on? Doesn't look like your audio is working. Give us a thumbs up and we've got quorum anyway, and so, so long as the other vote in. But just so you know, we, we can't hear you. Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
And Commissioner Toyah? Yes. Great. I vote yes, and we are back. So we're now gonna move into a regular call. First up, we're gonna call calendar number 1-22- S, our first official matter of the year. With that, the Department of Planning and Development will read the recommendation for this matter because it's a pro se applicant. And Nancy, are you on and able to read this recommendation?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I had that as not a pro se.
Oh.
Chairman, I believe Joe Ryan is her expert.
Ah, got it. There's an expert on this one. There's no attorney. Okay, that makes sense. Sorry about that. For calendar number 1-22-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon slash barber shop. Do we have Christina Collins on?
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Collins. Will you state your name and address, please?
My name is Christina Collins and the address is 3035 West Fullerton Avenue, Chicago, Illinois 60647.
Thank you. And you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so what brings you here today?
Um, I am proposing to open up a hair salon in the Logan Square neighborhood. I have been in the industry since 2009, and I've been a part of Chicago's barber shop and salon industry since 2013. I personally have always lived in the Logan Square neighborhood, so for me, it's an honor to be a part of this neighborhood. As I'm really passionate about it, Fullerton Avenue brings a lot of memories for me. This salon is also going to be a place to host independent artists. As well as I have a large community of stylists from all over the country. So I'm hoping in the future, especially after, you know, COVID. Is to really just bring a lot of people from all over the country and the world here to Chicago to experience the Logan Square neighborhood and kind of come together as hairstylists and barbers and all other artists.
That's great. Thank you. And so do you intend to employ stylists?
Um, no, I will actually have renters.
Okay.
So they'll run their businesses within my business.
So how many renters? Do you, can you explain how many renters you anticipate?
Um, right now I have a max of five chairs open. For, so I'll have a max capacity, five renters. Um, but for now, I'll keep it at four just because COVID.
Yep, perfect. Okay, we're gonna get Joe Ryan on as well, but any questions from the board at this point?
No.
Joe, are you still on?
I am, Chairman.
Great. Okay, so you're sworn in and we've acknowledged your expertise. So go right ahead on this one.
I went to the subject property. I examined it for all the criteria that this board needs to grant a special use for a hair salon. I examined each of the criteria in my report, reported what I found, and found that this did meet all of the criteria for the board to grant a special use for a hair salon at this location.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions from the board for either the applicant or for Mr. Ryan? Okay, we've got what we need here. So thank you very much, Ms. Collins, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Yep. Enjoy your weekend.
You too.
All right, let's go to calendar number 2-2-S. And this is at 3304 West Fullerton Avenue. And this one is, is pro se without an expert. So Nancy, I won't steal your thunder. So if you could go ahead and read this one.
Thank you. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. The department finds the proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you very much. So do we have, I believe the main applicant is Sarah Zabadne?
Yes, I'm here.
Sarah, can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Sarah Zabadne. The address is 3304 West Fullerton Avenue, Chicago, Illinois 60647.
Thank you. And you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. So tell us a little bit about what brings you here and what you're looking to do.
So I'm applying for a special use permit to open the nail salon in Logan Square. I've been in the industry for about four years now. The business was previously located in the Humboldt Park neighborhood. And I also had to go through this zoning process. But unfortunately, due to COVID, the business didn't survive in Humboldt Park. I had to shut down. I couldn't keep up with the rent when business declined. And now I'm just hoping to start fresh in Logan Square and open up a nail salon. And also, I'm a licensed nail technician in the state of Illinois.
Great. Any questions from the board? And Ms. Zabadne, I see that you have some, some witnesses on, so if you want to get them on as well, we can, we can do that now.
They were here in the very beginning when this started, but it kind of took a while until it was my turn and they all had to, to do their own thing. So unfortunately, they are no longer here.
We sometimes lose some people. We try our best.
I'm hoping it suffices.
Questions from the board, though, for Mrs. Zabadne? Okay, we have what we need on this one. So thanks so much for your time and we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
You too.
Bye.
All right, let's go to calendar number 3-22-S. And this is at 1879 North Milwaukee Avenue. So Nancy, whenever you're ready, if you could read the recommendation.
Absolutely. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you. And do we have Ms. Susan Sterba on?
I am on. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Ms. Sterba. Can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, great. My name is Susan Sterba and my address is 5319 North Paulina Street 60640.
Thank you. And you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, yes.
Thank you. And as an initial, just clean up. I believe our agenda might have your, the address of the salon wrong. Can you state?
Go ahead.
Address?
So the, the correct address of the salon is 1883 North Milwaukee 60647.
Right. So what, we will amend the agenda on the record just right now. Me saying the correct address for calendar number 3-22-S is 1883 North Milwaukee.
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On the, on the normal business, what brings you here today?
Well, good afternoon to you and to the panel. My name is, again, Susan Sterba, and I am looking to open up my second hair salon in Bucktown. I have an existing salon with 12 current stylists in Lincoln Park, and fortunately, we have survived and thrived through COVID. And I've been in the industry for almost 25 years, and I have always had my eyes set on Bucktown Wicker Park, so I am hoping to obtain a special use to open up a new hair salon there that would have 12 stylists working at that location.
Great. So just to confirm, you will be keeping your other locations open as well?
That is correct, yes.
Great. Questions from the board for Ms. Sterba? Okay, Ms. Sterba, it sounds like we have what we need here. So we really thank you for your time and showing up, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Enjoy your weekend.
Thank you. You too.
Okay. Let's go to calendar number 4-22-S at 1710 West 48th Street. Again, I think the Department of Planning and Development will read the recommendation.
The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you very much. Do we have Ms. Shanae Joseph on?
Yes, I'm on.
Hi, Ms. Joseph. Yep, we talked to you earlier. Can you, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Shanae Joseph, and the address is 1710 West 48th Street, Chicago, Illinois 60609.
Thank you. And you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. And as one minor just clarification for us. Are you the applicant or is your, or is your corporation?
My corporation is the applicant. I will be practicing the building in my, using it for myself and my other business.
Okay, great. So we've got, we've got both on the agenda, but it sounds like the corporation is, is the applicant. And Joseph Properties is the owner. Okay, so what brings you here today, Ms. Joseph?
Um, I am here because, well, for starters, I'm a, I'm a hairstylist. I've been a hairstylist graduation on Palmetto in about in 2012, and I've been practicing the salon ever since. And even prior, even before that. I am from the back of the yard, neighborhood, born and raised. My family own property in that area. And I love, I love it. I don't plan on, I mean, it's my, where I'm from. So definitely, I'm just ready to finally give back to my community. And in a very artistic way, that opening of the salon. And and I'm, I'm here because initially I was denied, I'm here to apply for the special use for the purpose of the salon. I was initially denied that, um, voting because of the competition rule. There was a supposed salon that was looking at 100 square feet. However, I went to, we found out that that salon is not open and operating. And then I went to a zoning meeting with the 15th Ward on December, I mean, November 1st, and they approved me. And so now I'm here with you guys.
Yeah, that's how, that's how you landed here. That makes sense with us. Do you intend to, to hire employees at the salon?
Yes, I do. I have six stylists, myself, and pretty much other people from the community.
Great. Perfect. Any questions from the board for Ms. Joseph? Okay, Ms. Joseph, it sounds like we have everything we need, so we thank you for your time and we'll take this under consideration.
Okay, one question. I know you guys have a review period. What is the voting time today?
So we, we get through our day and by tonight, immediately after our day, we deliberate and come back and and just give the results of the voting. It's public. You can watch it. Or it'll, it'll be on the website in a matter of days.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Enjoy your weekend. Yeah, thank you. Enjoy your weekend. Okay, let's go to calendar number five dash twenty-two dash S. We have Counselor Patrick Turner on this one, so I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop slash hair salon. So do we have Patrick Turner?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Turner with offices at thirty-three North and South Street. I represent the applicant Menestes LLC, which is seeking a special use to establish a barber shop that is located within a thousand feet of an existing personal service establishment in a B-one-three neighborhood shopping district.
And Patrick, sorry to cut you off. I just want to check really quick. Do you want to take five and six together?
That would be great.
Okay, so long as you think they're associated.
They're identical, just different addresses, Mr. Chairman.
So let me go ahead and read the department's recommendation for six as well. So the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop slash hair salon. And with that, I see someone's hand raised. Please only have your hand raised if you're objecting to this matter. I'm going to promote you now to confirm whether that's the case. It's a Galaxy A-O-two.
Chairman, I allowed them to talk, so they can unmute and let us know.
Okay, so can Galaxy A-O-two please unmute and let us know what they're what they'd like to say? And Kamal from the phones, you remember, is it star nine to unmute?
Yes, star nine, but this person is not on phone. The only reason I don't want to promote them is we don't know their name. It just says Galaxy A-zero-two.
Yeah, let's try to, you know, so that Galaxy A-two, if you could please unmute. We'd just like to figure out if you're here for this matter or a different one.
They are receiving a message from me. The host is asking them to unmute, but they're not responding, so I think probably moved away from the desk.
Yeah. So you sent them a message as well, Kamal?
Yes, I can, you can also, when we say ask to unmute, they get a prompt.
Okay, good. I'll keep saying it throughout the matter. I want to let the counselor get going, but, you know, as always, we are trying to go above and beyond to make sure everyone can speak. So with that, counselor, go right ahead.
Okay, so we'll take these together. So Menestes LLC is the applicant on both special use applications. The two addresses are thirty-two thirty-five North Ashland in the Lakeview area and the other address is fourteen forty-four North Wells. Now, I was on earlier, Mr. Chairman, when Alderman Burnett came on. I had met with Alderman Burnett personally. He suggested that we reach out to the Chamber, the Old Town Merchants and Residents Association, which we did. And the association submitted a letter of support dated December sixth to Alderman Burnett. So for the record, we did meet with the Alderman. He said to reach out. We got the support from the Chamber. And as a matter of fact, I'd like to submit that at some point, the letter of support into the record. But in any event, two identical cases. Mr. Edwin Greer is the manager of the LLC and purchased the assets of two existing sports club franchisees, franchises at the same time. So there was a sports club franchise operating at each of these locations. Menestes LLC purchased them both. And they are now required to secure their own special use permit because they're within a thousand feet of another personal service establishment. They, both locations are on ground floor levels. There'll be different managers at each of the locations. Mr. Greer does not actually work at the locations. He's just the manager or owner, I should say. So at the Ashland location, Gabby Martinez, who is a licensed cosmetologist, will manage that store. And at the Ash Wells location, Shelby Liedoff will manage that store. We also have engaged Bud Kerwin as our expert. Mr. Greer is also available to testify. At this point, I would like to call my first witness, which is Bud Kerwin. Bud, I believe you are with us?
Yes, I am.
Great. Bud, can you state your name, occupation, and address for the record?
Yes, it's Sylvester Bud Kerwin, Jr. My offices are at seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois. I'm president and owner of S.J. Kerwin and Associates, real estate appraisers and consultants.
Great. And you have testified before this board on numerous occasions. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that the board recognize Bud as an expert witness.
Yep, I would like to swear Bud in too. So Bud, can you please state your name and address one more time for the record?
Yes, it's Sylvester J. Kerwin, Jr. I'm president and owner of S.J. Kerwin and Associates, real estate appraisers and consultants. My address is seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
And yes, we recognize your expertise based off many experiences in front of this board.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Bud, you visited both of these sites and prepared reports regarding your opinions and conclusions for both of these special uses, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you also signed an affidavit summarizing your opinions and conclusions, which were also submitted as part of the findings of fact. Is that correct?
Yes, that's also correct.
And your opinions and conclusions conclude that each of these locations will comply with all of the criteria under the special use. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And in particular, it is your opinion that the special use, if granted, will not cause substantial injury to the character, welfare, or values of property in the neighborhoods and are consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, that's also correct. If I might point out, on both of these locations in my research, the zoning board of appeals approved both of these special uses back in twenty thirteen. And so they have been operating for seven years or so and under the same operation, sports clips.
Thank you, Bud. And if you were to continue to testify in this matter, it would be consistent with the opinions and conclusions contained in your reports on both of these matters. Is that correct?
Yes, that is also correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to walk through the individual criteria if the board thinks it's necessary. Otherwise, I'd open up questions for the board if they have any for Bud.
I think if we could get Mr. Greer on would be helpful. Then we'll circle back on questions for both.
Edwin, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
How are you, Edwin?
Yes, doing well. Thank you.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Edwin Greer, and it's one, four, 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 North Wells Street, Chicago, Illinois, six, oh, six, one, zero. And then also three, four, three, five, North Ashland Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six, five, six, five, six, oh, six, five, seven.
Thank you. And Mr. Greer, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Edwin, you purchased the assets of both of these existing franchise, sports club franchises, which had been operating since two thousand thirteen. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's now you need to obtain your own special use permits to continue operating as sports clips, correct?
Yes, sir.
And Gabby Martinez will operate the Ashland location. And Shelby Liedoff will operate the Wells location for you. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And they are both licensed cosmetologists.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you also signed an affidavit summarizing your opinions and conclusions on both of these applications. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And if you were to continue to testify, you would do so in consistent with the facts stated in that those affidavits. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Again, I welcome any questions for either Bud or Mr. Greer by the board.
Yeah, Mr. Greer, one that comes to mind is, do you envision changing any things in operations significantly with the shift in ownership?
No, sir. It's a franchise, so I'm pretty bound by my franchise agreement to operate just like every other sports clips in the nation. So I legally can't change anything.
Yep, okay. Other questions from the board for either Mr. Greer or Mr. Kerwin? Okay. Sounds like we have what we need. So thank you everyone for your time and we'll take both of these under consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And for the record, we also reached out to Alderman's office on the Ashland location. They didn't have any issues.
Okay, noted. Okay, thank you. Yeah, and counselor, I believe we stick with you.
That is correct.
So I'll call calendar number seven dash twenty-two dash S and read the department's recommendation. For calendar number seven dash twenty-two dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop.
Okay, again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name again is Patrick Turner. I represent the applicant Blade Work Studio LLC, which is an Illinois limited liability company. They are also seeking a special use to establish a barber shop, which is located within a thousand feet of an existing personal service establishment in a B-three-one community shopping district. The applicant is the lessee of the subject property located at one, zero, four, one, one, South Ewing Avenue. The proposed space is approximately six hundred square feet and is located at the ground floor level of a mixed-use commercial and residential apartment building. Alfonso Neverett is the member and manager of the applicant and is a licensed cosmetologist with experience at other barber shops in the city. The proposed shop will specialize in unique haircutting and styling that are popular with younger customers. The interior of the space will have three styling stations and a chair plus one movable chair and a customer service counter. At this point, I would like to call our expert witness, Bud Kerwin.
Thank you. And I want to note just again that if anyone is here to object on this matter, this matter being seven dash twenty-two dash S, please raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. With that, Bud has been sworn in and we have acknowledged his expertise.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Bud, again, for the record, could you state your name, occupation, and address?
Yes, Sylvester J. Kerwin, Jr. I'm president and owner of S.J. Kerwin and Associates, real estate appraisers and consultants. My address is seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
Thanks, Bud. And you visited this site and prepared a report regarding your opinions and conclusions for this special use. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you also signed an affidavit summarizing your opinions and conclusions, which was submitted as part of the findings of fact. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And in your your opinions and conclusions are that this special use and this site comply with all of the special use criteria in the code. Is that correct?
Yes, that was my conclusion after making my inspection and research.
And in particular, you are of the opinion that the special use will not cause substantial injury to the character, welfare, and/or value of property in the neighborhood and is consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to walk Bud through the individual criteria if you think that is needed. Otherwise, I would open up questions by the board.
Yeah, no, I think again, we can do the fast version of criteria. We just, of course, would like to get the applicant on.
Okay, Alfonso, are you with us?
Yes, good morning.
How are you, Alfonso?
Good, how are you?
Good. Hopefully, you're staying warm.
Yes, really cold out here.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name's Alfonso Neverett. Address is ninety-seven twenty-five South Avenue J.
Thank you. And Alfonso, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Alfonso, you are a licensed cosmetologist and have worked at other locations in the city. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you will manage the store. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you will, you also signed an affidavit summarizing your opinions and conclusions. Is that correct?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify here this afternoon, it would be consistent with the statements contained in your affidavit. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you heard the testimony previously. Do you agree with all that testimony?
Yes, I do.
Again, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd welcome questions by the board for Mr. Neverett.
And thank you, Mr. Neverett. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing as there are none, we'll take this under consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And once again, we did reach out to the alderwoman, Susan Sadlowski Garza, and do have a letter of support from her. And I would be happy to submit as part of the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, enjoy your weekend.
You as well.
Okay, we're now going to a special use as well as a variance. Calendar numbers eight dash twenty-two dash S and nine dash twenty-two dash Z. So I'll read the department's recommendation for the special use as everyone gets situated. And again, if you're here to object on either of these matters, please raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. For eight dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed fifteen-unit, three-building townhome development, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings stated January tenth, twenty-twenty-two, prepared by Three Sixty Design Studio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name is Patrick Turner. I represent the applicant McBriery Construction Company, which is the owner of the subject property, which is located at three thirty-four dash thirty-eight East Pershing, thirty-eight fifty-one dash fifty-seven South Calumet Avenue, and thirty-eight forty-four to fifty-eight South Martin Luther King Junior Drive. The property is located in a B-three dash three community shopping district. It comprises twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-four square feet or approximately point five seven acres of total land area. The applicant is seeking a special use to allow the construction of a new fifteen residential dwelling unit, three-story with basement, three-building townhome development with residential uses located in the basement and first stories of each building. I have hopefully with us as my witnesses, Ed McBrierty, who is the president of the applicant, Bud Kerwin, who I know is with us, and Robert Link, who is one of the project designers on the project. Hopefully, we have Ed and Bob with us.
Yep, I see Ed signed in. I see someone named Sarah Tyree with their hand raised. So Sarah, if you could just identify yourself so we can sort out what your role is here.
Is Eddie Ed McBrierty? Is that the same person?
I'm guessing so.
Edward McBrierty.
Great.
Sarah is one of the employees and a representative of Ed, but I believe, I know we have Bob because I can see Bob with us. And hopefully, Ed is also with us. And if not, Sarah may be testifying on Ed's behalf.
I am here.
Okay, there we go. Okay, there we go. Perfect. Our witnesses. So at this point, I'd like to call as my first witness, um, Bud Kerwin. And, um, Bud, uh, Mr. Chairman, you will recognize that Bud's, uh, under oath still, correct?
Yep, so Bud is both under oath and we've recognized his expertise.
Thank you. Um, Bud, for the record, please state your name, uh, occupation, and address.
Uh, Sylvester J. Kerwin, Jr. I'm president and owner of SJ Kerwin Associates Real Estate Appraisers and Consultants. The address is seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
Okay, Bud, you visited the site and prepared a report regarding your opinions and conclusions for this special use, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you also signed an affidavit summarizing your opinions and conclusions, which was submitted as part of the findings of fact, exactly?
Yes, that's also correct.
Okay, so, uh, Bud, let's talk, uh, about the, uh, approval criteria. Uh, in your opinion, the proposed development and the special use, if granted, will comply with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, that was my conclusions, yes.
Okay, in your opinion, the proposed residential townhouse, uh, used below the second floor level is in the interest of public convenience for the following reasons. Number one, it is consistent with the existing and more recent redevelopment character and patterns within the immediate neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay, and secondly, there are residential land uses below the second floor level to the north and south of the subject property, as well as some new ground floor residential development to the east um, along Pershing, and within, that is known, uh, known as the Oakwood Shores Redevelopment Project, is that correct?
Yes, that's also correct, yes.
They have, they have first floor residential there as well?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, third, the proposed development will complement the adjoining and nearby multi-unit residential developments, is that correct?
Yes, it will.
Uh, and lastly, with respect to the, uh, this criteria, um, the proposed development will provide an economic benefit by improving the lake and vacant, vacant land parcel with new townhomes, um, that are in market demand.
Yes, that's, that's correct also. The subject has been vacant for quite a while. Uh, and briefly, uh, Martin Luther King Drive, part of the boulevard, that has been, had land uses of residential minimum below the second floor level. Pershing Road has been more characterized as a commercial land uses, but many of those improvements that were built in the early nineteen hundreds have since been taken down. Been a lot of vacant land, there's been redevelopment in the areas such as the Oakwood Shores Redevelopment Project, and there's a number of newer uh, residential properties, up three stories, two and a half, with residential uses along the ground floor level to the east of our property.
Okay, um, the, uh, the proposed residential development, uh, is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning and building scale and project design as it has been designed with the intention of attracting similar middle-income individuals and family users that already reside in the neighborhood, is that correct?
Yes, that's what I found, yes.
And they are desirous of, of living in the city, uh, with these types of amenities and, and size, correct?
Yes.
Continuing on, um, it's your opinion that the proposed special use is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics, such as hours of operation, outdoor lighting, noise, and traffic generation for the following reasons. Number one, it will provide less pedestrian foot and vehicular traffic than a commercial retail occupant and therefore operate during similar hours as other residential properties, which have been established in the neighborhood for some time, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, in my opinion.
And also, um, there are other residential uses, uh, with similar, similar to the existing that have, that are already in the immediate neighborhood, is that true?
That's correct, as I mentioned, just to the north of us along King Drive, as well as along Giles or Calumet, uh, just to the north of us.
Okay, and, um, the proposed special use in your opinion, Bud, is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort for the following reasons. Number one, it will comply with all current residential building codes and standards, correct?
Yes.
Uh, secondly, the proposed project is designed to provide an efficient and economical residential use with storage and onsite garage parking, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct also.
Lastly, the improvements are similar to existing developments and will not adversely affect light and air to other properties.
That's correct, it'll complement character.
Okay, as a matter of fact, uh, your research of the immediate area as well as other similar properties in the neighborhood did not reveal any adverse impact on surrounding properties, is that correct?
That's correct, I found no evidence of any adversity to that.
And, uh, it is your opinion that the proposed special use will not cause substantial injury to the character, welfare, or value of property in the neighborhood, and is consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct also.
Bud, if you were to continue to testify here this afternoon, would it be consistent with the opinions and conclusions contained in your report and affidavit?
Yes, it would be.
Um, I have no further questions, uh, for Bud, be welcome, uh, any questions by the board?
Any questions from the board, um, for Bud before we get to the other, um, the other individuals?
I'm sorry, say that again, Mr. Chairman?
I was asking if there's any questions from the board. Okay, Bud, we might circle back with some, um, but we can keep going down the list.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would like to call as my second witness, uh, Robert Link. Bob, um, can you state your name, uh, occupation, and address for the record?
Robert Link, uh, project designer, twenty-four fifty-three South Archer, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one six.
Great, thanks, Mr. Link, and you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Bob, um, you were part of the applicant's development of a condo building located just down the block at thirty-nine fourteen dash thirty-nine twenty-two King Drive, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, you were, you were involved as a project engineer on that project?
That's correct.
And the buyers in that project wanted something more than a condo and less than a single-family home, so a townhome development there was more attractive, is that fair to say?
That's fair to say, that's what we found.
And then this development was designed exactly with that in mind, uh, and to be compatible with the surrounding area, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, due to this being a townhome or row home development, um, that is consuming the entire site, you decided to keep company with the row houses on Calumet and not the tall apartment buildings on King Drive, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you determined that a three and a half to four-story townhome would not work due to the fact that construction costs for the additional floors and extra stairs and fire sprinklers and other costs would not be captured by the sale prices that buyers are looking for, is that true?
That is correct.
So in terms of site planning, you designed the site, uh, for each unit to face the street and have individual, individual front entrances and parking off the rear, uh, so it could not be seen from the street, similar to the townhomes on Calumet.
That's true.
Uh, in terms of building scale, you matched the scale of the townhomes and on Calumet that are two and a half stories with basements, is that correct?
That's correct also.
And in terms of project design, uh, all townhomes are all masonry with different detailing that makes, makes each one of them look a little different, is that true?
That is true.
The townhomes have flat roofs and private front door entrances with iron railings similar to Calumet design concept, is that true?
That is correct.
It's all well within the neighborhood, right, Bob?
Yeah.
Uh, the choice of using different color masonry, iron railings for stairs, similar brick detailing also came from the development that you did for the applicant down the street, is that correct?
That is also correct.
Um, I have no further questions, uh, for Bob on, uh, on this application and would welcome questions by the board.
Okay, any questions from the board, um, at this time before we hear from Ed? All right, Counselor, go right ahead.
Okay, um, Ed, could you state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Ed McBrierty, McBrierty Construction, uh, and my address?
Yeah, business address.
At ten nine hundred South Hamlin, Chicago, Illinois.
Thanks, and, uh, um, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McBrierty, you are the president of McBrierty Construction Company, Inc., is that correct?
Yes.
And you own the subject property?
Correct.
You heard the, uh, testimony of Bud and Bob, uh, would you agree with all the testimony?
Yes.
Um, and you also, uh, submitted, uh, or signed an affidavit summarizing your, uh, testimony, which was submitted as part of the findings of fact, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, if you were to continue to testify here this afternoon, uh, it would be consistent with the facts contained in your affidavit, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd welcome questions, uh, from the board for Mr. McBrierty or any of the other witnesses at this point.
Okay, I've got, I've got one that comes to mind, and the, um, members of the board may as well, but, um, what were your discussions, if any, like with, um, older woman Dahl leading into, um, this plan?
Yeah, I presented it to her, uh, she gave me a letter of approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, as a matter of fact, um, I would like to submit that as part of the record, we do have a letter of support from older woman Dahl, um, for the record.
Let me make sure we already have it, because otherwise it's too late, um. Yeah, too late to submit the letter, but we, we, you know, the applicant's just told us that he's spoken with the older woman and, um, that's helpful. Other questions from the board?
Hi, this is, uh, Jolene Fall, I have a question about the variation, can you address the hardship, um, of the site and then how, how you're specifically addressing that hardship?
Yeah, Jolene, I'd be happy, I was actually just gonna, that was our special use presentation.
Oh, sorry, I thought we were doing it together.
No, that's okay, um, I've, uh,
Sarah, you take, just to be, yeah, clear, so Counselor, are you taking them, the presentation separately?
I am.
Okay, okay, you know, usually, we, usually we embed them, but,
I thought in this, Mr. Chairman, I thought in this case it would be prudent to separate them, because, um, I thought, I thought that would be, uh, the better way to, to proceed, so I'd be happy to dive into the variation request at this point.
Correct, yep.
Okay, um, again, um, the applicant, uh, seeks a variation to allow a portion of the required one hundred and seventy-five square feet of private yard area per unit to be located on balconies that exceed four feet from grade for ten of the fifteen proposed townhome units, uh, to, once again, to allow the construction of a new three-story with basement, three-building townhome with fifteen residential units. Um, once again, I have all three of the same witnesses with me, um, they've all been sworn in. Um, and at this point, um, I would like to, uh, call, uh, Robert Link as my first witness for the special, uh, I'm sorry, for the variation request. So, um, Bob, you work with, uh, Chris Bohm at Three Sixty Design Studios, correct?
Yes, for fifteen years.
And, um, uh, Chris had submitted an affidavit, um, in support, uh, or summarizing his, uh, opinions and conclusions and facts, uh, which was submitted as part of the variation application, is that correct?
That is correct.
And unfortunately, Chris is having a medical procedure this afternoon and was, uh, unable to attend this hearing, is that correct?
That is correct.
But you are familiar with the project, you are, you have read Chris's affidavit, and you're, um, testifying here on his behalf, on behalf of architectural side of things.
Correct for both, yes.
Okay, um, you are one of the project designers on this project, correct, Bob?
Yes.
Um, the proposed development consists of residential units, uh, that will include two lower-level partially finished, I'm sorry, will, will include lower-level partially finished basement with two cars, two car attached garages plus first and second floor levels for each, for each of the units as living areas, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the proposed variation we are seeking allows ninety to ninety-five square foot portions of private yard area to be relocated to a balcony on the same level as the first floor of the main living areas, is that correct?
That is correct.
This allows a more desirable, more convenient, and safer private yard area. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, strict compliance with the code creates a practical difficulty as it would not allow the relocation of the safer, more desirable private yard area. Is that correct?
Yep.
In fact, uh, the area, uh, would be located down a flight of stairs from the main living area and next to, uh, streets, the streets, in this case, Calumet, King, and Pershing.
That's correct, as you could see on the screen.
Um, in addition, uh, strict compliance with the code would result in smaller units by requiring the expanded private yard at grade in front of each units and, and would not allow the property to yield a reasonable return, which we'll go through later with Mr. McBrierty, but that's your, uh, opinion, is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, the subject property is an L-shaped corner lot with a hundred and forty feet of frontage on King Drive, two hundred and six feet of frontage along Pershing, and ninety feet of frontage along Calumet, is that correct?
Yes.
The parcel also has a sixteen-foot wide public alleyway along the rear portion, uh, with access from Calumet, is that correct?
That's correct.
As such, it is challenging to design a townhome development on this top of, type of property with the myriad of setback and separation requirements which altogether are unique and not generally applicable to other, other similarly situated properties. Is that your, uh, opinion?
Yes, it is.
Uh, the property is also unique because of the L-shaped configuration and other attributes that's set forth as we just talked about, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, the purpose of the variation is based upon offering a safer, more secure, and more desirable private yard area located on a balcony off the main living area, and not based exclusively on a desire to make more money out of the project, would you agree with that?
That's true.
And the difficulty and hardship in this matter relate to a safe and practical design amenity as well as the economic hardship, and has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property, would you agree with that?
Yes.
Uh, the proposed development will contribute to the overall economic viability of the neighborhood, is that true?
Yes.
Uh, this type of residential use already exists in the immediate neighborhood and would, will therefore fit in well with the surrounding area.
Yes.
The height of the townhomes will be similar to surrounding buildings, and there will be two car garages for each unit, correct?
Correct.
As such, the variation will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent properties or increase congestion or increase the danger of fire, or endanger the, the public safety or substantially diminish property values in the neighborhood.
That is correct.
That is a mouthful. Uh, in your professional opinion, strict compliance with the regulations and standards of the zoning ordinance would create practical difficulties and hardships for the subject development. Is that correct?
Yes.
In your professional opinion, these practical difficulties or hardships are due to unique circumstances and are not generally applicable to other similarly situated properties.
Yes.
In your professional opinion, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire, desire to make more money out of the project, is that true?
That is true.
In your professional opinion, the practical difficulty or particular hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property. Is that true? Okay. Uh, if the variation was granted, in your professional opinion, it will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
In your professional opinion, the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property or substantially increase or substantially increase congestion on the public streets.
Correct.
And lastly, in your professional opinion, the proposed variation will not increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety. Is that true?
That is true.
Bob, if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the facts and opinions contained in Chris's affidavit?
Yes.
And you are, you have read and are familiar with everything in Chris's affidavit, is that true?
That is true.
I have no further questions for Mr. Link and would welcome questions by the board at this point.
Any questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, doesn't sound like any.
Okay, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I would like to call, recall, I should say, Mr. McBurney.
Okay, go ahead.
Ed, could you state your name and address for the record again?
Edward McBurney, Eddie McBurney, Ed McBurney, McBurney Construction, ten nine hundred South Hamlin, Chicago, Illinois.
Ed, you heard all the testimony from Bob, and would you agree with all of Bob's testimony?
Yes.
And again, the proposed variation allows 90 to 95 square-foot portions of private yard area to be relocated to a balcony off of the first floor main level living area, is that correct?
Yes.
This allows for a more desirable, more convenient and safer private yard area, correct?
Yes.
Okay, strict compliance with the code creates a practical difficulty as it would not allow this, correct?
Correct.
So in addition, strict compliance with the code would result in similar, in smaller units, it would not allow the property to yield a reasonable return, is that your opinion?
Correct.
We're going to go in more detail on that in a minute, Ed, but strict compliance with the regulations and standards of the zoning ordinance would create practical difficulties and hardship for the proposed development as the ordinance would require larger private yard areas at grade, which would result in smaller, less desirable and less marketable units, isn't that true?
Correct.
The purpose of the requested variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to make money out of the project, is that true?
Yes.
You acquired the subject property in three phases, having purchased the first parcel in 1999, the second parcel a couple of years after that, and the third parcel in 2014, is that correct?
Right.
Earlier this year, you or the applicant, I should say, bought out your partner's interest in the property, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, McBurney Construction is the sole owner of the property.
That's correct.
Your costs in the land after the buyout and after taxes, insurance and other costs over the past 22 years is approximately 1.7 million, is that correct?
That's correct.
And your hard construction cost estimates, estimates for the project are approximately $5.625 million, is that correct?
That's correct.
Your soft construction costs are estimated to be approximately $621,000, is that correct?
Correct.
And you anticipate selling all 15 townhomes for approximately $8.9 million, which is about an average of $590,000, $595,000 for each of the 15 units as an average price, is that correct?
Correct.
And you have experience, because you developed and sold the units down the road that was previously testified to, is that correct?
Yes, I've been building for 20 years in Chicago.
And again, these figures are all based on market figures as well as the sale figures from the adjacent, the property down the way. Is that correct?
Correct.
Based on these figures, the anticipated return on investment will be approximately 12%, is that correct?
Correct.
And you submitted a cost analysis, a little more detail on this as part of your, as part of the findings of fact, is that correct?
Yes.
You also signed an affidavit summarizing your testimony, which was submitted as part of the findings, is that correct?
Yes.
If you were to continue to testify here, Ed, this afternoon, would it be consistent with the facts contained in your affidavit?
Yes.
At this point, I have no further questions for Mr. McBurney and I would welcome questions by the board.
Any questions from the board for, for anyone on the special use or the variants? Okay, sounds like we've got a good amount of information here, Counselor.
I was just going to run through, just a quick, I'll make it quick, but I wanted to put Bud on just for some elaboration.
Okay, okay, related to the variation, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Bud, you're, you're still under rules.
Yes.
You submitted, you visited the site and prepared a report, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Summarizing your opinions and conclusions, correct?
Yes.
And again, this type of residential use already exists in the neighborhood and will contribute to the overall economic viability of the property and the neighborhood, is that correct?
Yes, and, and I've included photos of the previously mentioned properties in my report.
And it's your, in your opinion, Bud, strict adherence to the code would significantly reduce the size of the units and in turn would not allow the property to yield a reasonable return, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then South King Drive has been historically associated with residential uses in the immediate neighborhood, is that true?
Yes, that's also true, as I mentioned.
And East Pershing Road previously offered some commercial space for local neighborhood users such as small grocery storefront, cleaners, barber shops and related consumer retail or office space, is that correct?
Yes.
The majority of these former commercial spaces have all been razed and many of the remaining storefronts are vacant and are occupied by secondary business-type tenants, is that true?
That's what I found, yes.
Okay, the district has limited pedestrian foot traffic in this immediate area that is necessary for more successful retail and commercial store businesses, is that true?
Yes, that's also true.
As such, the proposed development would reasonably reflect the highest and best use of the land and would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, is that your opinion?
That's correct, this development will enhance it, in my opinion.
If the strict regulation of the code were carried out, Bud, the private yard area would result in smaller units, which would in turn not allow the applicant to yield a reasonable return, is that your opinion?
That's correct, you know, based upon the other testimony that has been presented here.
Okay, and you heard the testimony of Ed relating to his costs and estimated return on investment, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Would you agree with the testimony of Ed?
Yes, I do.
At this point, I have no further questions for Bud and I'd welcome questions by the board.
Yep, any questions from the board? Okay, we've got plenty of information, everything we need, so we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, everyone stay safe and warm.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so let's go to calendar number 12 dash 22 dash S. As he gets situated, I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. For 12 dash 22 dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed gas station with an accessory one-story retail convenience store, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Fuel Line Management LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated January 13th, 2022, prepared by Axios Architects Consultants.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, again, for the record, my name is Nick Fatikas. I'm one of the attorneys at the Law Offices of San Banks at 221 North LaSalle Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, D Fuel LLC, I'm sorry, D Fuel Incorporated. The applicant has a lease for the subject property at 5843 South Wentworth. The subject site contains approximately 30,099 square feet of total area and today it's, it's currently vacant. The lot itself is located immediately east of the Dan Ryan Expressway at the intersection of West 59th Street and South Wentworth. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with a new four-pump gas station and a one-story retail convenience store building. In order to permit the project, the applicant is seeking a special use because the subject property is located in a split zone, C1 dash 1 and C2 dash 1 zoning district. There will be three witnesses testifying this afternoon on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Mohammed Abdullah, our project architect, Mr. Bill Kocalius, and our land use consultant, Mr. Kareem Musawir. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask to call my first witness, again, Mohammed Abdullah.
And with that, I just also want to state, if you are here to object for this matter, 12 dash 22 dash S, please just raise your hand and we will, we'll get you promoted. So with that, Mr. Abdullah, can you state your name and address, please? You're on mute.
You're still on mute.
Yep, and I'm going to swear you in, even though you've been sworn in just because this is a fully different matter, so if you could state your name and address, please?
Mohammed Abdullah, 43 Old Creek, Bear's Park, Illinois, 60464.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mohammed, again, you are the president of D Fuel Incorporated?
Yes.
And again, that entity has a lease for the subject property at 5843 South Wentworth, is that right?
Yes.
As I explained in my introduction, you're planning to develop the currently vacant lot with a new four-pump gas station and retail convenience store building, right?
Yes.
And again, the proposed station would have four fueling islands, a 3,200-square-foot retail building and off-street parking for 11 cars, is that right?
Yes.
Your plans also incorporate code-compliant landscaping, outdoor lighting and perimeter fencing elements, is that right?
Yes.
And in terms of your hours of operation, the station will be open and function 24 hours a day, seven days a week, is that right?
Yes.
The retail store will maintain similar hours, but will likely close overnight for safety and security reasons, is that true?
Correct.
And Mohammed, oh, in, in terms of employees, approximately how many employees do you anticipate hiring to help you run this location?
Eight full-time and two part-time, total of 10 employees.
Thank you. Mohammed, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements contained in your written statements?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, it is a special use application. If I can just call Bill Kocalius for a few quick questions about the site, I think they're pertinent for the board's consideration, but I can do a condensed question, if that's all right.
Yes, please, Counselor, thank you.
Bill, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Here, do you want to swear him in?
Yep, Bill, will you state your name and address, please?
My name is Bill Kocalius, Axios Architects, 188 North Wall Street, Chicago, Illinois, 60606.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
And Bill, you're the architect of record that prepared the building program for the proposed gas station and retail.
That's correct.
And as we discussed with the applicant, the, we discussed the improvements with the applicant, but in terms of site access, your plan relies on one curb cut from West 59th Street and a second separate curb cut on South Wentworth, is that right?
That's correct.
And you were able to make that work in this case, specifically on the Wentworth frontage, because this segment of Wentworth is actually a one-way northbound street, correct?
That's correct, right up and across the street is the expressway.
Right, and immediately, immediately to the west is the expressway, correct?
That's, that's correct, yes.
And, and the lot itself is actually a bit unique, even though this is not a variation case, it's irregularly shaped around the corner of 59th and Wentworth, right?
Yes, yes, there's a portion cut off. That's, that was its natural size when, when we, when we got the survey, correct?
So again, all of these features or details really actually help ease the impact the gas station may have both on inbound and outbound traffic, specifically back onto Wentworth.
That's correct, that's correct, yes.
And then lastly, Bill, the plan also incorporates an onsite detention area on what would be the north side of the lot, is that right?
That is correct.
And that detention area not only meets our requirement for the site, but also provides a little bit of separation between us and our closest neighbor to the north, which is a residential building on Wentworth, correct?
Yeah, yes, it is, and that detention area is going to be, we've got some landscaping on it, so it's a nice place.
Right, so the, the point is, in terms of an impact, that helps minimize any impact between our use and the closest neighbor to the north.
That's correct.
And Bill, is your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. My next witness, Chairman, is Mr. Kareem Musawir.
Great, okay, so Kareem, will you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Kareem Musawir, 221 North LaSalle Street, We're Land Use Consultants in Chicago.
Thank you very much, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, and we acknowledge Mr. Musawir's expertise.
Great, thank you, sir. Kareem, the scope of your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses set forth in the code, is that right?
That's right.
You physically inspected the subject property and the surrounding area?
I did.
And you prepared a written report summarizing your findings and conclusions, is that right?
That's right.
And it's your understanding that my office filed a copy of your written report with the zoning board already, correct?
Correct.
With respect to the special use standards, though, do you believe that the criteria are being met with this request?
Yes, I do. We have a 30,000-square-foot lot, which is beyond the 20,000-square-foot minimum requirement. As you indicated, we have a substantial setback from the residential improvements to the north over 30, over 30 feet of, excuse me, nearly 40 feet of setback with that retention area and then there's the parking spaces, so, and, and there are only two driveways. So yes, and then right next to the expressway, it is a use of convenience and we believe that it meets the requirements.
And again, just to stress the point of impact, because Wentworth is a one-way street northbound, you, you believe that the, the single curb cut is sufficient and again, will not have a negative impact on existing traffic patterns on that side of the property?
That's correct, there's a very little parking on Wentworth as well because of the fact that it's about the expressway and then anybody who wants to continue to go west can go out on the 59th Street and continue westward.
Great, thank you, and again, Kareem, if you were to continue to testify this afternoon, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written report?
Yes, they would.
Thank you very much. Chairman, before I conclude, I did want to point out that my office did send notice to Alderman Taylor's office. The client, Mr. Abdullah, also met directly with the Alderman. We're not aware of any pending objection and I just wanted to make sure that that was at least pointed out for the record. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our project.
Thanks, Counselor. I was wondering just if Mr. Musawir could talk a little bit more about the proximity to residential?
Sure, Chairman, the residential improvements south of the, excuse me, north of the site are on the other side of what we are calling the retention pond area and then there's a, there's like, we have a 1,201-square-foot landscape requirement. Actually, we're providing 7,400 and 4,500 square feet of landscaping. That's going to substantially mitigate any interference with residential use and then along with that, there's going to be a six-foot wood fence, board-on-board fence along that north barrier and along the alley. Across the alley is a religious institution and again, there is the, the, in, in addition to the wooden board-on-board fence, there's the burial, there's the, the distance of the alley as well. And they have a off-street parking lot just north of their improvement and they don't particularly use the alley for their ingress and egress. And um, they don't uh particularly use the alley for their ingress and egress. They use the streets.
Thank you very much. Um, other questions from the board?
Hi, this is Jolene Saul. I just want to confirm that I heard correctly. Is the gas station twenty-four seven, but the convenience store not?
So in this case, um, we would anticipate, so the gas station, yes, is going to operate twenty-four seven. The convenience store, we'd like to operate twenty-four seven, but what we've seen kind of in practice is that overnight, for safety and security uh purposes. The transactions could be limited to the front window, um, so that people aren't coming in and out of the store. It's really, again, security for both our customers, but also our employees. And that seems to be more of a trend in the uh gas station industry generally. So we would anticipate potentially closing access to the store overnight, maybe between um twelve midnight and five AM. And then reopen for, you know, the morning rush, coffee service, things like that, that would happen in the retail store.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Here, if I could also just clarify, I'm so, so sorry, but briefly, the other point is, we want to have an active presence on the site twenty-four hours a day. So even though customers may not be able to access the store, there would always be an employee or two onsite overnight. Uh, for, for security purposes as well.
Thank you, counselor. Um, one last call. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to go to calendar number fourteen dash twenty-two dash S. Um, this is with Counselor Moore. I'm going to read the department's recommendation, but meantime, um, if there is anyone. On to object, please just raise your hand in the Zoom and we will make sure that you get promoted and are able to speak. So for calendar number fourteen dash twenty-two dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair slot.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, hopefully I have uh Marlene David and Joe Ryan.
I'm here.
Yep, and I see um, I see Marlene David as well.
Um, would you, uh, Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing her in?
Yes, uh, Ms. David, will you state your name and address, please? And you're on mute.
Sorry about that. It's uh, Marlene David, three oh three West Division, apartment seven two six, Chicago, Illinois, six oh, six one zero.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. David.
Thank you. Uh, Marlene, um, will you tell the board how long you've been a licensed cosmetologist?
I've been doing hair for seventeen years now.
Okay, and um, you've always worked for other people?
Yes, until this last year, I've been uh renting my own space, a chair.
Okay, but, but even there, you're, you're in someone else's space. It's not your.
Yes.
Uh, you're basically a, a tenant rather than having your own independent business.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and um, you found this little seven hundred square foot storefront up on Halsted. And it's your dream to uh actually have your own salon. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you would uh bring your existing clientele with you, but then you also would hope to rent a chair or two to. Uh, another, someone like you, you've been all these years, who's, who's starting out in the industry. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And so uh, you and I worked out a lease with the landlord and we've applied to the board for a special use. And if you get it, you would um, do the build out, or the landlord would do the build out he agreed to. And uh, you'd start business in the spring. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And uh, you and I worked out an affidavit where we addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant your request for a special use. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes, it's correct.
Okay. Is Joe Ryan available?
He is.
Good. Uh, you, sir, at my request, did a study of uh this location and whether or not uh it could. Uh, it would have an, the granting of a special use for a hair salon would have. A negative effect on the surrounding property values and whether it could meet the other criteria necessary for the board to grant. A special use at this location. Is that right?
Uh, yes, and I also note I'm still under oath from uh prior testimonies.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, um, Joe is uh sworn in and his expertise is recognized.
And, and what were the, what was the sum and substance of your findings in your report?
Well, I examined each of the criteria uh that the board needs to examine. To grant a special use, uh, I detailed information on each of the criteria and found that uh. It passed with flying colors.
Okay, and it will not have a negative effect on the surrounding properties. Is that right?
None whatsoever.
And there's, there's sufficient density in this area to support uh another hair salon, do you believe?
Yes, I, I, I put the uh demographics into the report and, and found that they were. More than sufficient to support more than one hair salon or personal use in this uh neighborhood.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your report that is on file with the board. Is that right?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's the essence of our case. Both of these witnesses are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Um, any questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration and thank you very much uh for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to do one, um. We're going to do one more um matter that's actually um two, two matters in one before breaking for a lunch. So I'm going to call calendar numbers fifteen dash twenty-two dash Z and sixteen dash twenty-two dash Z. Um, which are with Fred Augustine. While Fred is getting situated, I just want to note, um, again, if there's any objectors on these matters on fifty-eight oh six South Blackstone. Please raise your hand and we will make sure that you have the opportunity to speak. I don't see the counselor. Oh, yeah, I do. Fred, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, go right ahead.
All right, I just want to make sure my witnesses are on. Uh, John Potter and then Dr. Stephen Small, are you guys on?
Yeah, I'm on for John Potter.
Okay.
I'm here too.
Okay, uh, Stephen, are you on? Hello, Stephen?
Uh, I just promoted someone named SDS, so maybe that's him.
That probably is him, yeah. All right.
Hi.
Okay. Hi, Stephen. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Fred Augustine. Um, here on behalf of the applicant, Stephen Small. Uh, applicant is the owner of the property at fifty-eight oh six South Blackstone. It's currently improved with an existing home, which is also known as the Halstein House. Um, it was designed by the renowned architect Bertrand Goldberg. Um, applicant wants to maintain this home. However, it does need updating and um, the applicant does need more space. So his plan is to rehab the existing home while also constructing uh two additions. Uh, a three-story addition will be built towards the southern end of the property. While a two-story addition will be built on the northern portion of the home on top of the existing garage. Um, just besides the historical aspect of this home, um, what makes it unique is that the home was built towards the rear of the property line. Um, so thus it has a humongous front yard. Um, the proposed additions will be positioned with the home, um, and will also be located towards the, towards the rear property line. Um, as you can see, because of that, the existing home does pose a hardship. Um, and trying to um comply with the rear setback, rear yard open space, inside setbacks. So in order to do this project, we are seeking a variation to reduce the rear setback from forty-four point five six feet. To uh zero point nine nine feet, uh, reduce the combined side setback requirement from ten feet to seven point six five feet. Uh, reduce the south side setback from four feet to three feet, as well as reducing the rear yard open space from the required four hundred eighty-seven square feet to zero. So here with me this afternoon is the applicant, Dr. Stephen Small, um, as well as our project architect, John Potter. Um, his colleague, Bob Zucker is also on the line, just in case to answer any additional questions. So first witness is um, Dr. Small. So it's Dr. Small, please state your name and address for the record. Stephen? You on?
You know, we had him. I'm trying to.
We, we lost him. He just joined back and I'm promoting him.
All right. Stephen, are you with us?
I, I believe we lost him again.
Okay, um. Should I just go to the architect while we wait on him, if that's all right?
Um, so Stephen is the applicant, correct?
He is the applicant.
Yeah, so we need him on the whole time.
Okay, all right.
Let's uh, let's give it a minute. I'm going to give it like three minutes or else we're going to break for lunch.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Stephen is attendee. I'm going to promote. Stephen, let us know when you're on. Um, you're going to need to unmute.
I'm unmuted.
Okay, there we go.
All right.
So I keep, I'm sorry, but I keep dropping in and out and trying to reconnect.
Okay, well, we have you now. So uh, so Stephen, if you could uh state your name and address for the record for the board?
Uh, Stephen, you're muted. Um.
I just, I just dropped out and had to reconnect and it keeps unmuting me whenever the whole thing fails. Uh, Stephen D. Small, fifty-eight oh six South Blackstone Avenue, Chicago, six oh six three seven.
All right, and you are the owner of the property, is that correct?
Yes.
And your plan is to.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings? Stephen, are you still on? I see you on. Fred, if there's a quick way to get him to call in instead, that would be easy or else I'm just going to go straight to lunch and.
Yeah, and that's right. I, I tried to call him that. So he called in. He's saying that he's muted. So how does he do it if he called in, I guess?
He should push star nine.
Instead of promoting him, I'm just letting him come on from attendee.
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, dial the caller number and then it'll prompt you to do the start line.
So Chairman, did you say you were going to break for lunch?
Yeah, older woman, w- we're going to see if we um can get this person on, but we're having some connection issues. Um, and um, either way, we're going to be breaking for lunch shortly. Okay.
I think uh Stephen Small is thinking, calling in means joining the Zoom again. I think he has to use the telephone. To dial into the meeting using the phone.
And I believe he, he's doing that right now. He, he told me, we just got so.
Let's give it a shot.
Uh, Stephen Small, if that's you on the phone, you have to press star six on your phone to unmute.
Oh, star, I told star nine, sorry.
No, that's, that's my fault. I thought it was starting.
Star nine is to raise your hand while you're on the phone.
Yep, so star six, if you're the seven, seven, three. Okay, um. Seems like something's not working, so I am going to make sure we don't waste too much time and I'm going to call uh recess for lunch right now. So we, we will reconvene at, at two ten and just make sure everyone is ready then. So um, again, two ten PM, uh Commissioner Torres. Is that Stephen? It's always just in the nick of time, every time this happens. Uh, uh, yeah, is that, is that Stephen?
Hello, I'm, can you hear me? It's Steve Small.
Yes, can you, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, okay, sorry. I did, the board is going to be mad at me because I called lunch, but I'm going to change my mind because we already started this. Um, but if you drop it all, I'm going to, I'm going to delay it. So um, will you state your name and address, please?
Stephen D. Small, fifty-eight oh six Blackstone, Chicago.
Okay, thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so Dr. Small, so your plan is to obviously keep the existing home, but build two additions to it, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, um, and one of the additions will be a three-story addition towards the southern end of the home, is that right?
Yes.
As well as a two-story addition that will be on the northern end of the property on top of the existing garage. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, so since the existing home um is already constructed towards the rear of the property, the proposed additions will also be. Located at the rear property, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, which is obviously the reason why we're here today, because it will be difficult to comply with the uh rear, rear yard setback, the rear. rear yard setback, the rear yard open space, as well as the uh side setbacks, is that correct?
Yes.
And if we can, on your behalf, my office did submit an affidavit, you executed, is that correct?
Yeah.
And if your testimony continued here today, that would be consistent with the facts presented in your affidavit, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh my next witness is Mr. John Potter. Mr. Potter, are you on?
Yes, I am.
All right, Mr. Potter, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh John Potter, twenty-eighth thirty-eight uh Central, Evans, Illinois.
Okay, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thanks, and and Mr. Potter, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
So Mr. Potter, um the subject property is improved with the historical single-family residence, is that correct?
That is correct.
So in your professional opinion, obviously, working with with such a structure can pose a challenge, is that right?
That is correct.
So can you briefly just walk through the board briefly what the proposed plan is for the house in terms of rehab and the additions?
Yes, so the intent of the renovation is to maintain the existing uh historic Bertram Goldberg house. And in order to do that, we're requesting to reduce the side yard and the rear yard setbacks so that the addition could be placed in the rear of the property, and so that we can preserve obliquely as much of the existing house as possible. Thank you.
Um, okay, so um on your behalf, my office did submit an affidavit, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if we did continue with your testimony, or uh we'd be consistent with the facts presented in your affidavit, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions. We're here to answer any questions the board may have.
Yeah, so you know, I had a note in here, if you could just um if either the, I think it would go to the architect, could explain a little bit more on um the south setback reduction request and what triggers that, is that the addition as well?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so yeah, go right ahead, I'd like to hear about
Uh the 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 challenge is, is that the garage is allowed in a rear yard setback. However, um once we reduce the required rear yard setback, then the garage is actually in the uh within the or is outside of it, so we've placed the addition on top of the garage. Obviously, it's more economical, but it also preserves more of the front of the house.
Just to expand on that, Mr. Chairman, Fred Augustine, um you know, the south addition is obviously matching the rear wall of the existing home, so by building out, um you know, we are, as a result, have to be setback three feet, so
Okay, because the wall, the walls of the existing home are um uh currently non-conforming, is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Great. Other questions from the board on this one?
Uh this is Commissioner Esposito. Has there been conversation, is this a landmarked building? And whether or not it is, has there been conversation with the preservation community on this proposal?
Fine, if you want to answer that.
It 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 is currently not, however, uh the intent of the renovation is to restore it back to its original, and the owner is perceptive to a preservation or a landmark status of the building in the future.
So this addition has not been discussed per se with the preservation community?
Um it has not, that is correct.
Yeah, it hasn't.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hey Fred, did you want to get, um I think you have one more witness, do you want to um get them on?
Uh I think the only third person was Bob Zuber, he's colleague of John Potter. He was just there to answer any questions in the event John had to drop out, so.
Okay, great, then I'm just going to offer up uh one more opportunity if the board has any questions. Okay, we've got what we need here, so thank you very much, everyone, for your time, and we'll uh take it under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, we are going to take um a break and uh for lunch, and it's going to go to, let me do some math, sorry. Um it's going to be a forty-minute break, which brings us to uh to my brain is dead, everyone, I think it brings us to two eighteen. Um Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Perfect, um Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and we will see everyone back at two eighteen PM.